Meeting to order, everyone. Thank you. Ms. Bo, please do roll call.
Robert Byrd.
Here.
Alma Cortez. Barbara Ferrer.
Here.
Astrid Hager. Abigail Marquez.
Here.
Summer McBride.
Here.
Maricela Ramirez.
Here.
Kara Sagala. Polly Mitchell. Deanne Tilton Durfee. Jacqueline McCroskey.
Here.
Alejandro Alvaron Moses.
Here.
And Frank Ramos.
Here.
Coramis present.
Thank you. Onto our next item. Ms. Bo, are there any commissioners who will be joining this meeting today under AB 2449?
Confirming there are no commissioners joining under AB 2449.
Thank you. Our next item is report out of our closed session meetings held on April 25th, May 2nd, and May 9th. With that, I will hand this over to our legal counsel, Sarita.
Thank you. So yes, there have been sessions of the executive committee 25th and May 2nd of this year, as well as a closed session in advance of this meeting of the full board. The topic for all three closed sessions were performance evaluation, the title being for the president and CEO. There was discussion amongst the committee as well as the board, but no reportable action was taken during any of those closed sessions.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Are there any comments from commissioners? Ms. Bo, are there any public comments on this item?
Confirming there are no public comments on this item.
Seeing none, we will move on to the next item. The next item is our consent. Are there any comments from commissioners? Ms. Bo, are there any public comments on this item?
No public comments on this item either.
Seeing none, we will move on to the next item.
And Commissioner, if we can get a motion and then a second to approve the item.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to approve consent? Move by Dr. Bird.
And I'll do roll call.
Thank you.
Robert Byrd.
Yes.
Alma Cortez.
Yes.
Barbara Ferrer.
Yes.
Astrid Hager. Abigail Marquez.
Yes.
Summer McBride.
Yes.
Maricela Ramirez.
Yes.
Motion has passed.
Thank you. The next item is remarks from myself. I don't actually have any remarks. This would normally be Supervisor Ms. Mitchell's opportunity to share any reports that she wants to. And I know that we have a very long agenda, and I'm feeling very hot in the hot seat right now, so I'm going to actually move us on. But before I do, are there any comments from commissioners on the vice chair's report? Ms. Bo, are there any public comments?
Confirming there are no public comments on this item.
All right, we will move on to our president's report.
Thank you, Commissioner McBride. Good afternoon, members, First Five LA team, and members of the public. Welcome. Today, we will have a deep-dyed discussion both on community engagement and our proposed draft budget for fiscal year. I wanted to take this time to really talk about our new strategic plan and the call-out in the strategic plan for community engagement, for equity, and for partnerships. And one of the things that the team has discussed internally, that equity recognizes the profound wisdom of our communities, and it is essential for dismantling racial, economic, and gender injustices in its truest form. And that it is a focus for all, especially those for this from opportunity, and we hope conversation on what that can look like. Partnerships lie at the heart of all our strategies, the public policy strategy, community engagement strategy, and systems change strategy. And we want to make sure that as we're building out the next iteration of community engagement, that central to that community engagement work is a constant checking back in with communities and bringing it back here to the board and developing that continuous process with community and a continuous process of evaluation. We acknowledge that there are several community engagement practices that were discussed with some board members. And First Five has, First Five LA has worked with community partners to elevate decision-making and informing processes. And we maximize this through an initiative of our Best Start, and you all will hear more about some of that work today. As we move forward, our approach to community engagement will evolve, and will evolve because of some of the fiscal realities that the board has discussed for some time. In our new strategic plan, we want to make it really, really clear. The evolution is necessary because of our investments, and we want to make sure that it is not a reflection on the really exceptional work that is happening with our community partners, many of whom are here today. Board members, our goal today is to seek your insights on direction and on direction for partnerships and community engagement. What learning do you think is really important as we think about the next phase of our community engagement work? I'd also like to take this time to really wish all the mothers in the room Happy Early Mother's Day and hope that you all have rest more than anything on Sunday. So with that, I will turn it over to the.
Thank you. Are there any comments from commissioners? Ms. Bo, do we have any public comments?
Confirming there are no public comments on this item.
All right, thank you so much, and I echo that. Happy Mother's Day to all of the mothers. Our next item is for information and will be a presentation on First Five LA's proposed budget for fiscal year 2425 and long-term financial plan. With that, I will hand this over to Raul.
Can you guys hear me? Great. Good afternoon and welcome, commissioners. Before you, we are presenting to you the proposed fiscal year 2425 budget and the updated long-term financial plan, which we refer internally to as the LTFP. We did present the budget to the Budget and Finance Committee along with the Executive Committee on May 2nd, which we did receive endorsement to move forward and present to you as an information item today. This budget does reflect alignment to the fiscal year 2020-28 strategic plan with resources to also support ongoing work with tactic developments as we pivot to the new strategic plan by fiscal year 2526. As anticipated, our Prop 10 revenues continue to decline. And for fiscal year 2425, we have reduced our projected revenues by roughly $1.5 million or 2.7% from 55.6 to 54.1 than what was, than what we originally projected last year at this time. For our other revenue, we do see great opportunities for non-prop 10 resources. We are projecting between $9.4 million to $10.3, which we are in the process of finalizing with some of our external partners. And that number is significantly higher than what we originally projected for this time a year ago, which we originally projected roughly $2 million. So we're seeing a significant delta on our other revenue, which is representative of the great work our program is doing when it comes to identifying resources to offset our expenditures and to sustain the work that we're wanting to do. So with those other revenues, it does put the total demand of First Five LA's funds, that means what's coming out of our pocket, of roughly $81.4 million to $82.6 million against the proposed 2425 budget that is roughly $92 million. And also, the budget is below the established demand that was approved by the board in 2020 through the long-term financial plan. The second component of today's presentation will be the long-term financial plan. I want to make clear that today's presentation of the LTFP update does reflect under the current practices that we currently have and aligned to the 2020-28 strategic plan. Though internally, we are working with the Budget and Finance Committee and with the senior leadership team, we are working to update our approach to modeling our new long-term financial plan that aligns to both our fiscal reality and our new adopted 2429 strategic plan. The reason why this is a priority for us to update our approach to our long-term financial plan is because our current plan does not account for the result of Proposition 31. So with the result of Proposition 31, and now that we have adopted a new long-term financial plan, this is the time and the best opportunity for us to really look at our long-term financial plan, which we will be bringing to you at a later time this summer and into the fall. At this time, I want to pass it to my two colleagues. Daisy Lopez, who is our finance P&amp;A manager, financial planning and analytics, who, she really does take the lead in representing and putting this budget together. And I really want to just applaud her great work and the effort that she has led across the organization. It is an organization-wide-led project, and the leadership team does lean in to present this budget. But really want to applause to Daisy for her, you know, project management and putting the budget proposal together. And from there, she'll pass it to John Wagner, Honorable John Wagner, who will be going into more of the details around our program budget. And then we'll wrap it up with the LTFP and then next steps, and we'll go from there.
Daisy? Thank you, Raul. Good afternoon, commissioners, staff, and guests. As Raul mentioned, today we will be providing an overview of the fiscal year 2425 budget with a particular focus on some of our core programmatic costs for the year, as well as an overview of our operating budget estimates and the impact of these estimates to our overall administrative costs. We will then review updates to our long-term financial plan, and as Raul noted, we're going to conclude with the next steps in this process. So as a reminder, the budget is an iterative process, and sometimes the estimates can change along the way when sharing with the board. This year, we do expect to see some changes in external funding and corresponding costs proposed for fiscal year 2425, including a $1 million downward adjustment to external funding and proposed program costs from a partnership with the Los Angeles County Office of Education, and an additional $1.1 million downward adjustment to the anticipated external funding from the Department of Mental Health, and a $50,000 increase for communications activities. These adjustments have not been reflected in today's materials. The revised budget and materials will be shared in time for the June board meeting. So just to note, the materials shared today are consistent with the materials that were shared last Thursday with the Combined Budget and Finance and Executive Committees. Additionally, as Raul noted, a revised long-term financial plan will be proposed and shared with the board for engagement and approval in fiscal year 2425. So more information on this will follow as it becomes available. And again, updates to today's LTFP are related to the plan that was reviewed and approved by the board back in July 2020. So the budget was developed consistent with previous years, but with greater alignment to our fiscal reality, particularly in light of the ongoing effects and impact of Proposition 31. Additionally, this year, we are transitioning from one strategic plan to another. We are winding down alignment to the 2020-2028 strategic plan and are preparing for implementation of the 2020-24-2029 strategic plan. For budgeting purposes, the program costs are still largely organized to align with the framework of the old strategic plan, while the operating budget costs are organized in alignment to the new organizational structure in support of the new strategic plan. In general, resources included in this year's proposed budget continue to advance the goal toward long-term sustainability. One example of this is the restricted external funding we intend to receive from partners to offset activity expenditures in next year's budget. Another example is that the proposed budget also ensures that activities that have completed their objectives are appropriately ramped down and are phased out consistent with their contract terms. So some examples of this include Little by Little, the kindergarten readiness assessment, and the refugee family supports projects. And finally, the resources proposed in the budget demonstrate that we are being very intentional, very strategic, and very disciplined in anchoring our investments on the work priorities and our fiscal realities. And you're going to hear a little more about that in this presentation. So as previously mentioned, we are organizing the program budget similar to last year by center office and team with legacy investments and emerging opportunity funds following suit. And the operating budgets have been organized in alignment to the new organizational department structure, which aligns with the new strategic plan. So today's presentation will review highlights of each of these components and the overall resource needs for fiscal year 2425. So as you can see in this table, the proposed fiscal year 2425 budget of $92.9 million represents an overall decrease in anticipated spending for the year of roughly $8.3 million or 8.2% when compared to the revised 2425 budget. This is driven by a net decrease in program spending of roughly $9.7 million and by an increase of approximately $871,000 in support of operating costs, both of which we will examine further a little later in today's presentation. Although we see a slight uptick in legacy investment costs, these investments represent ongoing work from previous strategic plans, the remaining legacy investment will sunset according to its previous terms in fiscal year 2425, at which time that budget component will be eliminated and the allocation is anticipated to be fully exhausted. We have also included $150,000 in a centralized pool of emerging opportunity funds, which provides us with the flexibility to respond to and implement new or emergent opportunities or situations that align with our strategic plan goals. The proposed budget of $150,000 is consistent with previous year's budgets and our anticipated need. The total proposed cost estimates result in a more streamlined budget that pushes us toward greater alignment with our fiscal realities and our long-term goals and trajectory. This budget is reflective not only of our commitment to live within our means, but of proactive, responsive understanding of our evolving fiscal reality in which we operate, resulting in declining revenues and a fluctuating fund balance. One approach employed to combat the accelerated declines in revenue is an emphasis on long-term sustainability. So an example of the sustainability measures employed is the additional funding secured from partners to support the work that has been identified for fiscal year 2425. So as you can see in these tables, the total fiscal year 2425 budget will be offset by approximately $11.4 million in other revenues, reducing the actual estimated net demand on First Five LA's resources from $92.9 million to $81.4 million. At this time, materials reflect an anticipated receipt of approximately $11.4 million in external funding from partners to support activities in fiscal year 2425. This includes funding from First Five California to support Impact 2020 and Quality Start LA activities, funding from the Department of Mental Health and a Medi-Cal Managed Care Plan to support Welcome Baby and Select Home Visiting activities, and First Five California funds to select Welcome Baby activities. As previously mentioned, based on recent conversations and developments, we do expect that this external funding will decrease by about $2.1 million to a final total of roughly $9.3 million, and you'll see these revised estimates and budgets next month. So additionally, program expenditures will be adjusted downward by $1 million as the expenditures were contingent with funding. The final iteration of the budget materials reflecting these adjustments will be shared next month. This change and any other changes from the iteration that is shared with you today will be explicitly called out for board members at next month's meeting. So as Proposition 10 revenue trends continue on a downward trajectory, First Five LA will continue not only to maintain, but amplify its efforts to diversify our revenues and explore other alternative revenue generating sustainability strategies for the future, as well as pursue opportunities to partner and leverage funding from other organizations to support the work of the organization on behalf of the children and families of Los Angeles County. At this time, I will turn it over to our Executive Vice President, Joan Wagner, who will share some programmatic highlights.
Thank you, Daisy. Good afternoon, commissioners. For the next few minutes, as Daisy mentioned, I will be getting into the numbers that are broken out on this slide. And basically, this slide captures the five departments that comprise the Center for Child and Family Impact, which holds most of our programmatic work. And make no mistake about it, even though it is programmatic work within the center, we do this across the organization and with external partners. And testimony of that will be the next presentation that we have with our community partners. On this slide, as I mentioned, there is work embedded in each of these five departments. This represents about 82% of our programmatic budget. So our budget is a programmatic and operational budget, two pieces. The work of these five departments is 82% of our overall total budget. Overall, the majority of the work in fiscal year 2425 continues across these departments, although at a reduced level. And the center is seeing a proposed budget reduction of just under $8.3 million or roughly 12% from the previous year. Now I'll focus on some of the key drivers of those reductions, just so that you know for each department what is changing. So starting just in order with family supports, this department oversees our single largest investment in direct services, which you know is Welcome Baby Select Home Visiting. Given programmatic costs in this area are largely driven by contractor's staffing costs, overall, we're able to achieve just over $2.5 million in savings with the closure of one provider due to performance issues and some programmatic adjustments that capture savings from vacant positions across those contracts and reduced staffing levels due to the lower caseloads related to the fact that LA County is, has been having a lower birth rate compared to the state. This also includes savings due to the expected ramping down of our Welcome Baby Impact Study. This was a study that was underway during COVID and is ramping down and now is in its final year. And also, we just wanted to acknowledge, as Daisy did, some internal, or some cost savings that we're able to achieve due to DMH funding, which was highlighted on the previous slide. Moving on to our next department, the Communities Team. This department oversees our investment across five regions and 14 communities known as Best Start. The $1.86 million in savings in this department reflects an across-the-board 13% reduction for the five regional network grantee partner contracts, as well as a 20% reduction in anticipated ramping down of something that we've been funding called the Best Start Learning Agenda. So a lot of that work was, and information was collected, and it is now ramping down. Moving on to early childhood education, this proposed 2425 budget includes a reduction of $1.47 million. And this is primarily represented in the sunsetting of our kindergarten readiness assessment initiative, which had been a multi-year initiative. And this includes the KRA work with Long Beach Unified School District and the completion of the majority of the UCLA 2324 contract. In addition, the variance in this proposed budget from this fiscal year also reflects a decrease due to Laco funding ending in fiscal year 2324 for the dual-language learner communications campaign with a lesser amount of funding from Laco anticipated in the proposed budget year 2425 to extend the campaign and a decrease in consultant services for the home-based childcare strategy. Other significant areas programmatically include the continuation of the two-year impact funds that we've been awarded that focus on building up LA County's ECE infrastructure, preparation for universal preschool, UPK, funding for our Provider Advisory Group, as well as the Quality Start Los Angeles work. Moving on to the next department, the Health Systems Team. We typically funded two areas of work in this department, and you've heard presentations on these recently, including our EII, or Early Identification and Intervention Work, involving our investment in Help Me Grow and birth equity in the African-American infant maternal mortality prevention work. Overall savings for this department are approximately $2.4 million from the previous fiscal year. And let me break those out. For Help Me Grow, this year, we saw the ending of our contractual relationship with LA County DPH. For Help Me Grow, as you know, and has been presented to the board, DPH continues to implement Help Me Grow and has secured county funds to support this work for an additional year, which has shifted to a regional-based parent-peer coaching and support model throughout the, for the county, which has been a topic of a couple board presentations. In addition to that, our funding on the Help Me Grow Pathways grantees, which are organized around the seven regional center catchment areas, are coming to their anticipated end date. And so there's funding in 2425 for two of those seven areas. The others were funded on an earlier timeframe, and those two of those seven areas will be ending after this year's budget. As far as the birth equity work, we're seeing the ending of the hospital-based quality improvement component of AIM that we call Cherish Futures, and as well as a reduced pass-through funding from Communications that we're receiving from DPH. But that funding is not being reduced. It's going, just instead of coming through First Five LA, it's going directly to the community-based organizations. And then the final item on this budget is the Center Support Team. And then, the final item on this budget is the Center Support Team. And in the Center Support Team, we see a sixty thousand dollar reduction, or roughly thirteen percent. That really is just based on historical spending patterns and updated contracted work. This really funds two areas. We have a contract for consultant services and health-related consulting, as well as the County Partnership Fund that actually identifies emerging opportunities over the course of the year, where we can align First Five LA's work to county work. So, both of those items are being reduced for a total of sixty thousand. And with that, I'll turn it over to Daisy.
Thank you, John. The other component of the programmatic budget is the work within the offices. So, these resources will allow First Five LA to continue to play a pivotal role as a connector, convener, collaborator, and thought partner in advocacy efforts to prioritize young children and their families through data communication and in policy and practice for fiscal year twenty four, twenty five. The estimated cost for these activities in fiscal year twenty four, twenty five is just under ten million dollars. The total budget proposed to advance the activities led by the Office of Government Affairs and Public Policy is approximately five point eight million dollars, which represents a roughly seven hundred and eighty-six thousand dollar or twelve percent decrease compared to the twenty three, twenty four revised budget. The fiscal year budget will focus on core government affairs, advocacy, and public policy functions, including lobbying, articulating organization-wide, wide-approved public policy change priorities, working with the network of First Fives, and developing strong relationships with policymakers. Resources will also be used to develop and catalyze relationships and partnerships with the goal of advancing the field of early childhood development. The largest investment under OGAAP's purview, the Early Child Policy and Advocacy Fund, will work to promote policy and practice changes at the local, state, and federal levels that prioritize children ages prenatal to five years old, build and strengthen the intersections of public systems, and create self-sustaining policy changes. Additional investments will focus on advocacy and policy change priorities in consultation with staff across the organization, advancing sustainability goals through influencing state and federal budgets, administrative guidance, and policy development. The total budget proposed to advance the activities led by the Office of Communications is about two point seven million, which represents a roughly five hundred and twenty thousand dollar or sixteen point three percent decrease compared to the previous year's budget. This proposed reduction is driven by the Office of Communications' efforts to examine the roles of contracted resources in the context of the office's evolving approach to developing and implementing integrated communications, marketing, and internal communications efforts to support the organization's strategic direction. Costs will continue to be assessed to reflect further targeting refinements. The Office of Communications' resources will advance First Five LA's strategic priorities, advance employee knowledge in support of the organization's goals, operations and engagement, build public awareness and will, and catalyze policy and systems change to better address the needs of LA County's young children and families, achieving greater clarity across audiences to bring urgency to issues and improvements that impact conditions of early childhood development, while building and amplifying First Five LA's brand and reputation as an advocate, systems change leader, and trusted source of information. The total budget proposed to advance the activities led by the Office of Data for Action is one point five million dollars, which represents a ninety-five thousand dollar or six percent decrease compared to the twenty three, twenty four revised budget. The Office of Data for Action provides organization-wide leadership and expertise in measurement, evaluation, and data-related endeavors. Their key responsibilities include advancing a data agenda, providing leadership on the Impact Framework, which measures and tracks the outcomes in our strategic plan, offering technical assistance for research and data efforts, and managing data and research investments for the organization. ODFA's budget will support efforts to implement the Impact Framework, develop a data agenda, lead the annual reporting process, and maintain data partnerships with the Children's Data Network and Public Health Foundation Enterprise WIC to support the organization's twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-nine strategic plan. As previously mentioned, for legacy investments, we only have one remaining legacy investment. That is little by little. They are anticipated to fully exhaust their allocation in fiscal year twenty four, twenty five. The total resources to support this investment for next year is just under two point six million dollars. And as mentioned earlier, resources in support of emerging opportunities for fiscal year twenty four, twenty five is one hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is consistent with the budget in previous years and the anticipated need. Now, shifting to a discussion of our internal operating costs. In this table, you can see that the total overall cost is about four point two percent or eight hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars higher than the cost in fiscal year twenty four, twenty five, from twenty point eight million dollars in twenty three, twenty four to proposed twenty one point six million dollars in twenty four, twenty five. The net increase is primarily the result of the increase to Personnel Services and Professional Development. This is offset by decreases in the other cost categories. So, the proposed budget to support personnel costs, developed in collaboration with our Human Resources Department, includes one hundred and five full-time employees, including nine priority hires and ten vacant positions. Although the priority hires have been identified and included in the appropriate department budget, the ten vacant positions have been centralized in HR's budget, pending the tactics development and onboarding of the vice presidents to redirect vacant positions to the areas of greatest needs within the organization. Although we had one hundred and seventeen full-time employees available for fiscal year twenty three, twenty four, twelve of those positions were frozen for the year pending assessment of need. These twelve positions have since been eliminated, and we are holding steady with budgeting for one hundred and five full-time employees for fiscal year twenty four, twenty five. Reflected in the Personnel Services cost is also, also includes the increase to benefits with a seventeen percent increase to health insurance, a ten percent increase to dental, and a five percent increase to vision. The operating budget also includes a five percent merit pay adjustment included for all positions. And it also, the budget also includes and was adjusted to include a three percent attrition rate across the budget, personnel budget. So, resources in the operating budget also include funds to support the full-time hybrid model needs of staff, such as a monthly internet and mobile phone stipend and parking reimbursement. We will continue to analyze, assess, and make recommendations to ensure that resources are fairly distributed across the organization and are accessible amongst our staff. As First Five LA's administrative costs are captured within our internal operations costs, we will now tease those funds out and discuss the proposed administrative costs for fiscal year twenty four, twenty five. So, of the twenty one point six million dollars proposed in operational costs, our total administrative cost for fiscal year twenty four, twenty five represents roughly fourteen point five million dollars. This translates into an administrative cost of approximately fifteen point five eight percent. Our administrative cost policy requires that we adopt an administrative limit each year, but unlike other county commissions, the policy does not specify a maximum percentage for this limit. However, through the Long-Term Financial Plan process, a target to maintain the administrative costs equal to or less than fifteen percent of the total budget was adopted in twenty twenty. The total of fourteen point five million dollars in administrative costs this year represents fifteen point six percent of the total budget, which exceeds the fifteen percent target that was established through the Long-Term Financial Plan. So, we endeavor to maintain an appropriate ratio of administrative to programmatic costs. It should be noted that the increase to the administrative cost limit this year is primarily the result of the one point four million dollars in vacant positions that are temporarily housed within the Human Resources Department budget and are therefore all fully captured as administrative costs. However, these will be redirected towards the programs throughout the year, pending the strategic plan implementation and the further assessment of need across the organization. Additionally, as a reminder, First Five LA maintains a very broad and inclusive approach to what is considered an administrative cost. We do not allocate and distinguish costs for the vice president, directors, or administrative staffs, administrative assistant staffs, based on time spent on administrative functions versus programmatic functions. So, any future changes to the administrative cost policy will be presented to the board for review and approval. Now, we're going to turn to a review of the updates to our Long-Term Financial Plan.
And actually, we're about to complete this one, and this is the Previous Long-Term Financial Plan. Is the team good with taking some questions right now, or do you have about two or three slides, Daisy?
Okay. Yeah, I, I, thank you. Yeah, I do have just basic questions, and thank you so much. The presentation was thorough and very informative. These are where I'm confused. You noted that we brought in new revenue. John, I think this is something you were presenting on, of about eleven point four million dollars. A significant amount of that, probably about seven-plus million, is for sort of home visiting support. But then, when I look at the line on, and Welcome Baby Support, when I look on the line for family support, you actually cut that program by two point five million dollars. So, you brought in more revenue for that, but that program is still getting less money. And I guess, you know, that's my question in general. You have eleven million in revenue. It looks like most of it would cover programming under the Center for Child and Family Impact, and yet, we're making some very, very significant cuts. And I heard you, some programs are, you know, sort of edging out. I mean, I know you've been helping to support Help Me Grow. When we lose that support, that program is compromised. So, I, you know, I'm probably sitting there with other people who are looking at this saying, you know, some of this will result in changes in programming or the elimination of programming. And I'm just confused about where that eleven million, eleven point four million dollars went. Yes. I mean, you could tell me if I'm like mixing this up.
No, no, no. It is, no, you're absolutely right, because unlike, I mean, First Five LA's budget does represent funds that we receive and pass through. So, that is part of that, what's going on with these dollars. A couple of points related to your question is, one, that eleven point four is a moving target and is likely to go down, as Daisy mentioned in her previous comments. The second is, even with that, you're right. These dollars are coming in, we're basically paying for home visiting services. And when these dollars are received, they offset First Five LA costs. Above and beyond that, we are projecting the reduction of the two point five million, which includes the closure of one program due to performance issues and administrative adjustments we made to the contracts, which really are based on taking vacancies out of the contracts for staffing that has not been filled. And when we first created the contracts, it was based on a ratio where we had a much higher birth rate in LA County, and the staffing reflected that higher birth rate. Within the last year or so, the Family Supports Team has readjusted it, acknowledging the current birth rate, and that has also allowed us to achieve some savings. So, these aren't necessarily reductions in slots. There are also savings in costs to contractors, but it is a reduction. Does that?
Yeah, I mean, that helps. I mean, I'm still puzzled, and I'm happy to take this offline, because it might need a more detailed conversation. I might be missing something. I'm just looking at it like at a very high level, saying, you know, we started with thirty-nine million dollars in this one area. You increased revenue by seven million, but you reduced the program down to thirty-six point six million. It's hard to, it's hard to understand why, in an area where we're bringing in more revenue, we're seeing, you know, what I'm going to say is a significant cut. You know, the same thing with Health Systems Work. Like, I, you know, I don't see, I don't see that revenue, that eleven million total, which I would have assumed would have shown up as an offset in a different way. I don't see it showing up as that kind of offset. I'm not sure if what happens is, you know, and I have questions on this as well, on the operating budget side. If some of it is, you know, moves into the operating budget and makes it possible to not have a more significant impact on the operating budget. But it is, it is confusing.
So, in terms of the external funding, I think when we move into a review of the Long-Term Financial Plan, that might provide a little more context, because if we're looking at it as an isolated case, it is a little confusing to see that it's reducing if we're bringing in funds to offset. But this funding isn't always secured by the time we develop the budget. So, we have to move forward with a budget that we know that we can support on our own. And sometimes, funding comes in after the budget has already been approved, and that's fantastic. But there's also no guarantee that that funding will continue down the line. And we need to have conversations across the board, across the organization with our grantees, just to let them know and bring them along with what the reality is for the organization. And the reality for the organization over the past several years has been that our expenditures continue to outpace our revenue. And we need to try and align that a little more closely. And as Raul noted earlier, and we mentioned earlier, with Proposition Thirty-One, that gap has increased in terms of the revenue and expenditures. And it's going to make it more and more challenging for us to manage that when the revenues are naturally on a gradual rate of decline now, following Proposition Thirty-One. But since that gap has widened between revenues and expenditures, we need to reassess and realign to a degree that we can manage when all of the external funding is unknown. So, as I mentioned, we were anticipating eleven point four million, and that's changed. And now, we anticipate that by next month, that's actually going to be nine point three million. So, it's, it fluctuates, it's unpredictable. And so, we need to be able to know that we can realistically fund these projects.
Yeah, no, no, I appreciate that. I mean, obviously, you know, I think that's a dilemma for all of our organization.
Right.
You know, we rely on a lot of external funding sources, so, you know, I appreciate the dilemma. I think there's, I think this board needs to get more engaged on sort of, you know, how do we manage for reduced income from our main source? You know, we do have a pretty big trust fund, and I think there are decisions about, you know, what you need to, you know, what's, what is sustainability? Like, and what are we sustaining for? You know, we have, we have a communities where people are in desperate need, and we have millions and millions of dollars sitting in the fund. So, you know, I would just say that, that's a healthy conversation for the board. But my confusion was, you brought in, let's just say it's nine million. You still made eight million plus in reductions in your programming area. If I go to the operating budget, which looks to me like it's about twenty-three percent of the total budget, we actually didn't decrease the operating budget, you know? So, we're decreasing our, again, on the sustainability conversation, we're decreasing what we're able to do on programming. We actually had small increases on the operating side, which is, again, a significant portion. You know, it's, it's almost a quarter of our budget on the operating side. So, you know, I'm putting these out, because I think there are issues that the board needs to pay a lot of attention to in terms of, you know, the impact on programming. And I respect the need to come up with some other models and figure out other kinds of work that First Five can get engaged in. But I also know that some of the work that's being funded by First Five has been critically important in our communities. And I'm not sure that, in my mind, I'm a hundred percent with you on these kinds of reductions, because it's a sustainability model. Like, I'm, you know, I see how much money we continue to carry every year in a fund balance, and I see how much money goes to the operating side of the house. And I'm just raising a general question on this budget about, you know, is there a different way to approach this? Because this, this is millions and millions of dollars in cuts to programming. Because this, this is millions and millions of dollars in cuts to programming.
A few things. Do very, very deeply appreciate that. And there's a lot of conversations on the long-term financial plan that will ask those very questions. So our Budget Committee has given us a lot of direction on making sure that we're asking those questions. So want to make sure that's very clear. And then, Dr. Fider, the funding we receive, the eleven million that will go down to nine million actually is restricted. So it is provided for really unique purposes that we can't distribute to this program or that. So as we are balancing, bringing in additional revenue, some of our external partners look to us for potential innovation, but we can't actually use it for some of the programs. And when we can, we absolutely do that. So that's why you see a fluctuation in current programming, because some of our external partners that are ready to partner with us on our longer-term sustainability for the purpose of serving children and families. But they, they have different sort of focus. Yes, yes. Yep, yep, yep. That's it. That's exactly it.
That I totally appreciate.
Yeah.
And, and that makes a lot of sense to me, that you're bringing in new revenue, but it's for new program. It's not actually revenue to replace what we've already done. It's targeted for something new that we're going to do as an organization.
Are there any other questions from commissioners about the first portion of the presentation before we go to the long-term financial plan?
Just one quick question. You talked about some of the reasons why some of these funding categories were reduced. But I'm, I'm still new, so I'm trying to get as familiar and acquainted, because I see a reduction across, you know, primarily in the Center for Child and Family Impact. And I don't know if you can share what analysis was done to allocate the reduction? Because it wasn't clear to me if it's, because you mentioned vacancies, but I don't know that that was the issue across all of the program areas.
Yeah, that, thank you, Commissioner. That was unique to the family supports team, because the bulk of the budget in the family supports team funds staffing costs with our external grantees that administer the home visiting model. Other examples I called out were, for our communities team, our RNG, which is our regional network grantee partners, we have five of those contracts, and that was strictly a target reduction across the board based on the decrease of our revenues, and that was reflected in all five of those contracts. There are other areas, and I called out several, in the health systems team that were, we were funding certain things that naturally are coming to the end of their contracts. And a couple of examples of that are, we funded in Help Me Grow the, or, hold on, let me just get my notes so I get this. The Help Me Grow Pathways grantees. So these were grantees that we funded for a certain number of years in each of the seven regional center catchment areas. Some of those are naturally coming to an end. Those contracts are coming to an end and ramping down. We had more than one cycle. So the ones that remain in the budget are the ones that were funded a little later and still have active contracts. So that's an example where we've partnered with a grantee. We've said we'll fund something for a number of years, five years, and we're at the fifth year, so it's naturally ramping down. There's other examples of funding, like Cherish Futures, which was a hospital quality investment through our AIM work, African-American infant maternal mortality prevention work, where it was, there was one-time investments in hospital policies, protocols, building databases and things like that that naturally were invested in and funded, and our dollars are now not, not supporting that work because the work is done. But make no mistake, there's still reductions across all of these teams that do mean, you know, reductions in services or investments. But those are some examples of what is driving those reductions.
Thank you. That's helpful.
Are there any other questions?
I do have sort of a request, and this is the second or third time I'm seeing this because of the Budget and Finance Committee, and it didn't come up until this discussion right now. Is there a way to present to the board at a future discussion? The reduction in spending, but broken down by which programs are sunsetting, which programs have run their course because they fulfilled the agreements, and programs that were just assessed based on need, and that led to the reduction in the spending?
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Yeah. Are there any other questions or comments? I think we can move on to the next portion.
Okay. Returning to our long-term financial plan, the updates, again, to today's, the presentation for today is related to the updates to the plan that was presented and approved by the board back in July 2020, which also established annual spending limits through fiscal year 2728, from which we cannot deviate without board approval. So the purpose of the LTFP is to aid in the financial stewardship role by providing a framework that shows the long-term implication of the funding decisions so that we can increase our fiscal discipline and proactively manage future spending to maximize the use and impact of our funding. So although I don't have a table, the table of the LTFP is included in today's materials, and you'll see that these spending limits for fiscal years 2526 through 2728 do, do align to a downward trajectory of approximately six-point-four-seven percent in annual spending per year. And this goes back again to the plan that was approved by the board in 2020. So the current process requires that we update the LTFP to capture the updated revenue forecast, the most recent audited fund balance, mid-year revised estimates, and the estimated expenditures for the proposed draft budget. So this update to the LTFP is change on, changes to revenues and estimated spending for fiscal years 2223 through 2425, which is grounded in new information. So this graph is a visual representation of our revenue and expenditure decisions and projections through fiscal year 2728. And it illustrates the effect of the revenue and expenditure decisions with expenditures continuing to exceed our revenue and revenue continuing to decline. So as you can see, again, the gap between the expenditures and revenues at the end of fiscal year 2728 is widening compared to the projected total revenue pre-Proposition Thirty-One. And that revenue is indicated with the blue dot. So this is one, just one of the reasons that's prompting the organization to revisit our long-term spending plan and the spending limits that were established in 2020. So work on this revised LTFP is underway. And as Carla noted, it was previewed with the Combined Budget and Finance and Executive Committees last week. Efforts in this area will continue to be socialized with the board as more information becomes available. So what follows are some of the assumptions and adjustments that were included in updating this year's long-term financial plan. So the spending limits include the assumption that the program costs will represent eighty-five percent of the total cost on an annual basis, and administrative costs will represent fifteen percent of the total cost on an annual basis. Again, we are housing some other vacant positions in HR's budget, which is why we're seeing a slight uptick in that fifteen percent for this year. The annual expenditure rate of decline for the subsequent projected years is approximately six-point-four-seven percent. Our Proposition Ten revenue will continue to be grounded and is grounded in the updated revenue projections from the State Department of Finance and the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration. Our other revenue estimates are updated to align with the projected external funding from our partners. And lastly, our LTFP assumes that fifty percent, fifty percent of the total budget will be classified as reserve funds, as was approved in the original 2020 plan. So adjustments to the LTFP include revised Proposition Ten tobacco tax revenues, updated to align with the latest projections from the state, which capture fiscal implications of the flavored tobacco ban in California. Updates to our other revenue category will capture the anticipated funding from our partnership with First Five California, the Los Angeles County Department of Mental Health, and the Medi-Cal Managed Care Plan. And we also have an internal downward one-percent adjustment of Proposition Ten funds included in the LTFP for future years in response to payment dispersment trends. This is just an internal downward adjustment for anticipated projected revenues, and this is updated as we go through the audit process and update numbers with audited final estimates. So the adjustments included in the LTFP also include changes to the estimated spending for fiscal years 2223, 2324, and 2425. The estimates for 2223 were updated to align with actual spending for the 2023 audited financial statements. The estimated spending for 2324 was updated to align with the 2324 mid-year revised budget, which this year was shared with the board in February as an item to receive and file. And the estimated spending for fiscal year 2425 was updated to align with the proposed budget of approximately ninety-two-point-nine million, which is less than the LTFP established spending limit of approximately ninety-five-point-one million. The changes to the approved long-term financial plan has resulted in a decrease in Proposition Ten revenue from fiscal year 2223 through 2728 compared to last year's LTFP. However, the changes have resulted in an increase in external non-First Five LA Proposition Ten funding, and an increase to the total projected revenue compared to last year, a decrease or cost-neutral expenditures for fiscal years 232425, and consequently, an increase in our projected available ending fund balance at fiscal year end 2028. So ongoing changes in spending and revenues will cause our projected fund balance to fluctuate. So this is another reason why we will be revisiting the long-term financial plan, spending, and revenue projections. So again, we will be engaging with the board throughout this process to ensure that the LTFP estimates align appropriately with our needs, and we can determine how we can most effectively use our available fund balance for the next few years. So in terms of the next steps, we will, again, be sharing the proposed draft fiscal year 2425 budget and updates to the LTFP with the board next month, when we return for actual, action and formal approval of the budget and updated long-term financial plan on June thirteenth. As indicated in the slide and previously mentioned, we will be revisiting spending limits and assumptions in response to the evolving fiscal environment and changing circumstances, and returning with a revised long-term financial plan to the board in the coming months. So again, more information will be shared as it becomes available. So we thank you for your time and feedback. Turn it to you, Chair.
Thank you so much. Are there commissioners with questions, Dr. Fider?
Yeah, thanks so much. That's super helpful. Can I just better understand the next step's timing then? So it sounds like at the next meeting, we're going to approve both the budget and an updated long-term financial plan, but we won't have necessarily had the opportunity to have the presentations from you to discuss the assumptions in the revised long-term financial plan. Like, I'm just trying to get the sequencing. It sounds like we're going to approve something before we actually discuss it.
So the, the approval next month will be the updates to this long-term financial plan. So updates to the 2020 long-term financial plan, and it's just updates to our revenue based on latest information from the states. The other revenue changes that we've received, and then aligning the 2324 budget with the mid-year numbers, so changing that. And then also updating the 2425 projected spending limit with this current proposed budget. So those are the changes that are being included in this plan. In terms of the revised plan, that's going to be forthcoming. So as we mentioned previously, that has been previewed with some of the board members last week. But that will return to the full board for further discussion along the way.
And the next step, do we have a next step in this timeline?
So what we presented at Budget and Finance Committee were guardrails to how, the direction we want to move with the new long-term financial plan, which we will be providing as an update in June under the strategic plan update. The, I, the plan is for us to develop an updated long-term financial plan that takes us through fiscal year 3435 that aligns the tactics and aligns our new fiscal reality with Proposition Thirty-One, because this current long-term financial plan does not account for Proposition Thirty-One. So that's, that's one of the reasons why we want to update the long-term financial plan. But we also want to make sure that we align it to when we complete the tactics so that we're presenting a long-term financial plan that really aligns to our strategic plan and puts us in a very good, fiscally sound position moving forward. So within this fiscal year, you'll see two long-term financial plans.
That sounds good. Commissioner Cortez?
And just kind of, thank you again so much for this, for this presentation, for all the details and the depth. And I just, if I could kind of just piggyback on Commissioner Rick McBride's previous comment about just kind of the details within some of the programs that are sunsetting, why? I do think it might be helpful to also, to, if it's possible, I was thinking about things in terms of buckets, right? The bucket, I don't know, the buckets of funding that are, you know, in different spaces, specifically the Prop Ten funding, right? Which, as you mentioned, there's, that's a lot of the money that's sunsetting. No?
Proposition Ten is our primary source of revenue, and that's been declining.
And so that's, I think, might be really helpful in terms of why there are certain, I mean, at least for me, and I'm barely new, so I'm still learning all of the things that have just kind of, that have been continued, that have been very helpful, have been really wonderful, but also are going away unfortunately, right? And then we will talk about the other stuff later. But yeah, does that make, I don't know if that makes sense, and if you already thought about that.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Cortez?
I guess, I agree, and I think that, I had other questions, and maybe this is for a different committee that I'm not on, which is the Programs Committee, but I would want to hear recommendations from you all on, regardless of whether funding is available or not, if you think that's the program and the work was impactful, and there could be an opportunity to potentially identify other funding sources to continue to support it. And again, I'm still new, so I don't want to assume that this isn't happening, but it would be really helpful to have that information so that we can, I understand, I'm in a world, I'm in a world where funding is reduced every single year, it feels like. And I know that some funds are restricted for certain purposes. But I think, you know, what is missing for me is sort of the impact, the story behind these numbers to help make a better, you know, provide additional, better like feedback, because that's what's missing for me.
Thank you.
I really appreciate that comment. So the budget presentation is definitely the numbers so that we have a concrete sense of that. And actually, the second part of the presentation, you will hear some of the community engagement. And our partners that will be presenting will share some of those narratives. And what we could do more is bring those stories here. But the budget presentation was definitely to give us the fiscal numbers for it. Appreciate the comment, and we'll make sure that more of those stories come to this group.
Are there any other comments or questions from commissioners?
I will say that when we're having a conversation about the numbers, it obviously does get hard to just keep to the numbers, especially in the work that we're doing to support families. It's so much more than just about the numbers. And one of the numbers that we, I don't feel like we haven't really talked about in these conversations about budgets is what's actually happening in the world of tobacco use. And painting that picture, and I just did like a quick search, I didn't know this information off the top of my head, but from nineteen-eighty-eight to two thousand and fourteen, there was a twenty-three percent or 11% reduction in smoking. From 2014 to 2022, there was a 51% reduction in tobacco use. And from 2022 to 2024, it's gone from one in three people to one in five people who are using tobacco. And with Prop 31 passing, which, I mean, we could argue is a good thing because we don't want to increase tobacco use, because that would have meant funding that we would have had to allocate for other things, like helping families be educated about tobacco use. But I think having that in the forefront of our thoughts about the trend with tobacco use being directly tied to our funding is, for me, very sobering, because while it's a good thing, this cessation, it's, we're funding really important programs based on something that we, our hands are sort of tied. So it goes back to the advocacy and the discussions at the state level of finding other funding sources. But in the interim, the sustainability of these programs is really critical. And I do appreciate this conversation is happening in tandem with our strategic plan and the tactics that will be developed to make sure that we're putting these funds that we do have to best use. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Voe, are there any comments, any public comments?
We do have one public comment that was emailed to us on this item, and I'll go ahead and begin right now. You are a public agency whose revenue has been going down every single year. Yet the way I see your budget prepared for this year does not seem consistent with this reality. The materials I see online states that there is an overall decrease of $8 million from last year's budget, which seems like a great thing. However, the truth lies in the details, because if you break down the categories further, First Five L.A. costs are estimated to decrease by 11.3% for programs, but increase by 4.2% for operating costs. Why is that? I see that personnel expenses have gone up from $16.2 million in fiscal year 23, 24 to $17.2 million in fiscal year 24, 25. And your budget says the overall increase in personnel costs is primarily driven by the employee benefits and the addition of vacant positions and priority hires. What are these priority hires? Seems very vague in your budget of what these are. Are they new positions that have been added? If yes, why are you adding new positions that cost more than last year to operate during a time when it seems you should be more prudent with your spending? In looking at your long-term financial projections, the proposed budget of $92.9 million is below the $95.1 million spending limit established in 2020 for fiscal year 24, 25. Again, great that you are spending less overall, but why are you cutting program costs just to turn around and increase your operating expenses? Based on projections, it seems like First Five L.A. will have to start downsizing in the near future to ensure you can sustain yourselves since your revenue continues to go down each year. Seems to me like there has not been proper foresight in this budgeting process, and the president and finance heads need to be held accountable for what's going to happen in a few years when First Five L.A. has to downsize dramatically. It might catch your staff and the public off guard since nowhere in your materials do I see that this inevitable fate has been articulated clearly or transparently. And this was sent in by Brad. And that concludes our public comment for this item.
Thank you, Ms. Voe. If there are no other public comments, I'll close this item. And I think we're scheduled for a break at 3:20. We're a little early. and will be a presentation on First Five L.A.'s evolving commitment to engage communities. Should we still just?
You can go ahead and take the break right now before we get into the next item.
With that, I will hand it over to John to kick us off. Break and reconvene around. We'll do 10:40, 2:55, is that okay? Okay, I'm sorry. I should have made sure John was here first. 2:55, we'll get restarted. Okay. Okay, now I'm going to turn it over to John.
Good afternoon, thank you. Apologies for the disruption. Good afternoon, commissioners and staff and members of the public. I'm excited to be here to introduce the next item that we will feature in our overview of our commitment to community engagement, something we've started to talk a little bit about during the course of the budget presentation. And I think I need a clicker. Here we go. So here is the presentation objectives on this PowerPoint. And we start with the new strategic plan and the critical role community engagement as an organization-wide strategy plays in our 2024-2029 strategic plan. But the work going forward can and should reflect on and learn from what has been one of our longest and largest investments in earlier community engagement, were called Best Start. Given this investment started nearly 15 years ago, we want to share how this work has evolved, what we've learned from this work, and how those successes and challenges might inform our thinking going forward as we develop the tactics over the course of the next few months for our new strategic plan. Our new strategic plan is built on our organizational values of impact, equity, partnership, and integrity. Our president mentioned these at the beginning of her opening remarks. This slide captures two of those values, equity and partnership, both of which are essential to not only our work generally, but the development of an authentic strategy on community engagement going forward. Equity is we honor the wisdom of our communities, recognizing that their assets hold the key to dismantling system barriers and forging a path to racial justice as we champion opportunity for all. Partnership is we inspire collective action built on trusting relationships, diverse perspectives, humility, and mutual respect. So this slide is a visual that is meant to capture some of the key milestones over the life of our place-based investment called Best Start. Best Start started as a pilot in the metro region back in 2009 with Per Los Niños, or PLN, and expanded to 14 geographic areas shortly thereafter. Initially, staff supported a lot of the logistical, administrative, and supportive work across these 14 communities, ranging from organizing meetings and meeting spaces to developing agendas and facilitating conversations in leadership groups, to arranging for logistics like childcare and food and transportation. In many ways, this was Best Start version 1.0. With that model operating for several years, we realized that having staff conduct many of these functions did not afford the opportunity for community groups to undertake these functions and grow these capacities. It also consumed First Five L.A. resources in ways that might not have been the best use of our resources and talents. So in 2018, First Five L.A. undertook a significant shift in thinking through the infrastructure to support this work across the 14 communities. Through an open procurement, First Five L.A. selected five regional network grantees with a network of local network contractors, all comprised of family-serving, community-based organizations. with a network of local network contractors, all comprised of family-serving, community-based organizations. In essence, First 5 LA became the funder of these intermediaries or partners who were in community and in a position to coordinate priorities across multiple communities with the five regional boundaries. I should acknowledge that First 5 LA Communities Team included community members in the evaluation of those that were applying for these RNG contracts, which was innovative for a public entity back in 2018. This was the evolution to Best Start version 2.0. Here's the map of the five regions that were selected in our regional network grantees. You'll see in Region 1, as I mentioned, Para los Niños covering East LA, Metro LA, Southeast LA, South El Monte and El Monte. Region 2, Rising Communities, formerly known as the Community Health Councils, was selected for this region, including Broadway Manchester, Compton, Watts, Willa Brook, and West Athens. El Nido Family Centers is the RNG for Region 3, including Northeast Valley Communities, as well as Panorama City and Neighbors. And the nonprofit Partnership was selected to cover Region 4, including Central Long Beach and Wilmington. And then Region 5, the Antelope Valley, including Lancaster and Palmdale, is covered by the Children's Bureau. And now, thinking ahead, we have an opportunity to lean into a new version of community engagement, version 3.0, informed by our learning from these earlier efforts. Keeping in mind that the original data and analysis that led to the identification of the original 14 Best Start communities back in 2009 is now over 15 years old, and obviously, these communities have changed. In addition, Los Angeles County has had a declining birth rate compared to other counties across the state, which not only impacts our funding from Prop 10, but also impacts where we focus, given kids are likely in different communities than they might have been in 15 years ago. Even though we're fortunate to have an increased fund balance, as we saw in the previous presentation on the budget, this growth has been unstable, giving declining revenues, and has mainly relied on decreased expenditures. Taking into account our new strategic plan, the roles spelled out in that new strategic plan for First 5 LA as highlighted on this slide, as well as our fiscal reality, now is the time to be thinking about how First 5 LA should engage in community, should engage community and our organizational-wide strategy on community engagement going forward. Given the realities that have manifested over the last 15 years, community engagement is likely to look different in our new strategic plan than it did previously. Now, I'll turn it over to Joaquin Calderon, our deputy director of the Communities Team, to say a few more words, and then we'll be hearing from two of our Regional Network Grantee Partners who are joining us for this presentation. So, Joaquin.
Thank you for that overview, John, and good afternoon, commissioners. I joined First 5 LA in the early years of Best Start in 2011, when a lot of the work was staff-driven. I started off as a program officer assigned to the community of Broadway Manchester, and early on focused my time on finding a location for our meetings and building a base of parents and residents to participate in the development of the community partnership. I facilitated community meetings and translated material into Spanish late into the evening. My son, who is now 13, was four months old when I started, and the love that came from being his dad helped me to understand the unique position I played through First 5 LA's focus on young children to strengthen networks of parents, residents, and other stakeholders. This understanding fueled my outreach efforts around two pocket parks that opened up in Broadway Manchester through grants from First 5 LA in 2012. I knocked on doors of houses and apartments within a few blocks of the pocket parks. On some occasions, I was joined by an AmeriCorps member with the Vista Program that was working with us at the time, and luckily, he was from that community, which helped tremendously in terms of getting residents to open their doors. But it was hard doing this outreach with such a small team, and after the park was already built. From that experience, I learned how important it was for community members to be engaged early on in decisions that impacted their community. Based on the First 5 LA staff learnings across the span of 15 years, I'm gonna now share four key themes across the regions that demonstrate examples of current efforts, progress, and challenges to expand the voices of residents and parents to affect policy and practice change for children and their families. The first theme looks at resident-parent power building and elevating community voice. Through the Regional Network Grantees, which we refer to as the RNGs, each region utilizes robust democratic community engagement structures to brainstorm projects, to plan, to develop budget proposals, and vote on priority areas, having greater influence on the decisions that affect their lives and quality of life support, a movement that champions residence-parent self-determination. RNGs provide education to resident parents on issues that impact their communities, provide insights on how to navigate within a civic system at local, county, and state levels, and find ways to involve residents in leadership structures, facilitating growth into new leadership opportunities. In South LA, the Region 2 RNG, Rising Communities, has been able to create a regional structure of parents and residents that leads the South LA Decides effort that expands grant-making decisions to the residents of South LA and Compton. One program that has come out of this effort is the Mothers Rising for Guaranteed Basic Income, which provides mothers in South LA with children ages 0 to 2 a guaranteed income for at least two years. The RNGs and partners have created a solid infrastructure that support ongoing identification of community priorities that unfolds an extensive process with community members towards understanding shared concerns, needs, and/or priorities in their communities, and working together to address them. They have been involved with the resident parents in such efforts as reviewing existing data, conducting surveys, focus groups, and holding community meetings to vet and process information. This connection will be very helpful in First 5 LA's strategic plan community briefing sessions held late last year to further inform key goals, objectives, and strategies. In Region 1, the RNG Para los Niños worked across four communities that are geographically separated to conduct a community impact survey that led to the development of a community bill of human rights. And this focus greatly contributed to a conversation recently held with the LA City Council member to demystify the city budget and make connections around the issues most impacting their daily lives. And I'll note that building any infrastructure can be staff-intensive, especially in the early stages of development, and RNGs across the five regions are exploring different models to sustain their work because relying primarily on staff alone is not sustainable considering our declining revenue. We see across the five regions innovative efforts to coordinate work across a large geography where communities within a region are not adjacent to each other always. They may be in a different spa area or part of different municipalities. And these efforts come with their challenges because of the different infrastructures that exist, which can make coordinating across regions extremely complex. The infrastructure helps in our third theme, to support and create conditions for collective action. The conditions for collective action often involve development of a common agenda, communication, coordinated activities, and the backbone support of a dedicated entity such as the RNGs. With the RNGs providing the backbone support, the formation of community partnerships are able to be sustained in the Best Start geographies through the creation of self-governing bodies. You'll hear from Region 4 shortly about the Long Beach Mayor's Fund. I will share that in Region 5, the Antelope Valley Resource Infusion, commonly known as AVRI, is a good example of a space where First 5 LA staff and the Region 5 RNG Children's Bureau are supporting community alignment and priority setting. Last fall, AVRI hosted a community workshop with community leaders, local government representatives, faith-based partners, as well as partners working on education, healthcare, prevention services, childcare, and food security to refine strategic priorities and develop shared goals to advance the work. And since this workshop, partners have been supporting the creation of a work plan that will guide their collective work throughout the years ahead. The work to strengthen conditions for collective action helps to inform the role that our staff plays as a connector, convener, and thought partner to complement the work of the RNGs and expand opportunities for collective action in the five regions. There's a wider array of networks in various levels of development that may not be in relationship with First 5 LA that could be invited and/or supported to focus on improving results for children prenatal to age 5. One example is the Southeast LA Orsella Collaborative, a network of community-based organizations, including First 5 LA, working together to strengthen the capacity of the nonprofit sector in the Southeast LA region to increase civic engagement and drive regional policy and systems change on eight community priorities that align with the vision of First 5 LA. First 5 LA staff join this network as an opportunity to connect the Best Start investment with other advocacy efforts in the region, learn from one another, leverage each member's expertise and resources, and align on strategies to create a strong regional advocacy effort. You'll hear shortly from our Region 4 partner about how they view the State of the Child report to influence systems change. You know, as we think about an organization-wide community engagement strategy, these themes provide important learnings from the success and challenges experienced in the Best Start regions. The challenges outlined here cover what I shared when discussing the four themes in terms of the resources needed to have an infrastructure that authentically engages and elevates community voice around a common agenda across the expansive, complex, and diverse community that is LA County. When I was that program officer in Best Start Broadway Manchester, the boundaries that we established to define that community were my, that was my universe at the time, you know? And as we move forward with our new strategic plan and our fiscal reality, the time to coordinate our collective efforts is more urgent than ever. Working in partnership with community has been critical to the success of Best Start efforts because families and residents are knowledgeable on the challenges that children and families experience in their community and the solutions that are likely to be successful. With these learnings, we want to provide more concrete examples to highlight this work by having two RNGs illustrate the unique context, opportunities, and challenges to advance the goals of the strategic plan. I'd like to introduce from Region 3 Gloria Villagrana Cruz from El Nido Family Centers, and then Region 4 Michelle Byerly from the nonprofit Partnership. And in their presentations, they will cover the questions that are outlined here on this slide. So, Gloria.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Gloria Villagrana Cruz, a mother of three young adults and a proud grandma of a young, intelligent, amazing five-year-old, Julián Alejandro. I am the director at El Nido Family Centers, the regional network provider for the San Fernando Valley Best Start, including communities of Panama City, Pacoima, and the Northeast Valley San Fernando. I want to sincerely thank First 5 LA for its historic investment in Best Start San Fernando Valley for the past six years. As the RNG, El Nido has evolved from a service provider into a convener of residents and parents, a builder of partnerships across sectors, and an enabler of systems change. In my presentation, I will do my best to speak on to the four questions that Joaquin outlined it around community engagement, systems change, and sustainability. Next slide, please. As you know, the San Fernando Valley communities we work with are mainly in Panama City, Pacoima, and San Fernando. These communities are mostly Latino population. The city of San Fernando is 92% Latino, Panama City is 70% Latino, and Pacoima is 91% Latino, respectfully. Primarily, our engagement is with any individual who walks through our doors and says yes to advocating for children. Our Best Start membership is mostly women from Latino background. We do have translation. Our overall community engagement approach is to engage and cultivate leadership of residents and parents to be stronger advocates for their children, for themselves, and their community at large. Thank you. In this circle, you could see how we elevate community voice for the families. In our regional council, we cultivate leadership of parents through concentrating and formulating an inclusive stakeholder engagement and advocacy strategy. Our leadership is serving in so many different leadership positions, three as parent center directors, five in neighborhood councils, six hired with other nonprofits, seven hired within El Nido, and two in the Help Me Grow Committee. Second, we host partnership meetings in the regional parent network. We have 40 to 60 consistent members participating. Since 2022, the regional network held 114 meetings and four large events, engaging 11,410 community members, and launched the El Nido Farmers Market. The farmers market is an example of how community identified need of food access has turned into a partnership with the city of LA. We've hosted family-friendly events in this space, and we do outreach for CalFresh enrollment at the farmers market. The community has also identified an opportunity with a vacant space near the farmers market, which we hope to partner with the city on to develop a family-friendly playground. We also have the regional initiatives, which we'll hear more about the Promotora Initiative in our next slide. Lastly, we have the regional collective healing, the Alliance United, which includes 30 CBOs, community agents, providing a safe space to exchange ideas on topics such as sustainability, advocacy, and healing. Next, I will talk about how Best Start Network has impacted the larger county-level systems. Our promotoras, our community health workers, are beneficial to connecting parents and residents to critical services in a culturally-affirming way. They serve as a bridge between systems, partners to understand how they need to work with residents and parents. Training promotoras also provide a safe space for residents and parents to build confidence and knowledge on how to navigate complex systems. Including promotoras is by itself a transformative systems change model. It's a win-win solution for the community. Residents learn a lifelong skill and can become employed by an agency, and they help improve complicated service delivery to residents. So far, we have trained 85 promotoras. One of them has been hired by DMH. We continue to develop strong partnerships with DCFS, funding El Nido Family Enhanced Navigation Project. We are exploring opportunities to collaborate in action with community public health team, using the community health worker and the promotora model. Next slide, please. After six years working as the RNG for the San Fernando Valley, we understand that genuine relationships and partnerships across sectors will help sustain the momentum of Best Start. This year, we will continue engaging the community and help create the San Fernando Valley Best Start Regional Strategic Plan. This plan will result in sustaining resources for key initiatives, and it will help with grant writing. We have also strengthened partnerships with local elected officials and agencies. For example, we recently submitted a grant proposal to a local elected official to sustain a family engagement project. And we continue to strengthen our relationships with the city of LA. We also continue to participate in First 5's community of practice with fellow RNGs and other four regions to help identify common stories and understand our role. Our role may be in a county-wide action together. I'll end here by stating how excited we are with the, at El Nido, with the First 5 LA strategic plan. I see clear alignment where a community is at. The issue of access to healthy food and affordable housing have been elevated for many years now. We also see opportunities to strengthen relationships with public systems to support and ensure culturally-affirming services through the use of the promotoras and provide, services are provided. and provide services are provided to children and families. I want to thank you for the opportunity of speaking. I will pass it back to Joaquin.
Thank you, Gloria, and we want this to be an interactive conversation, so we do want to have some time if there are any questions for Gloria and the work happening in Region Three. We'll do the same after Region Four's presentation and then also have questions and discussion at the end.
Commissioners, have questions, comments?
Yeah, thank you so much Gloria for the presentation and more importantly, for the work you're leading. I do want to make sure that you already are connected with the community public health teams that are that's there. I think there's at least one community public health team. I know they would love to work closely with Best Start, but particularly with the Promotoras. So, you know, I'm happy to talk to you and just make sure you're well-connected, but you tell me what, how I could be helpful.
Yes, definitely. Thank you. We are connected. We are discussing an MOU with them, possibly a financial MOU, so thank you very much.
Okay, I'm glad. Commissioner Cortez?
Hi, thank you again for your for your work. I'm also, I'm a resident of District Three and representing District Three. And I was just really glad to see all of the wonderful work you're doing and wondering if you're also, or if the organizations have considered also partnering with some of the community colleges in the area who are also engaged in in work on related to food insecurity and are trying to do work on housing. And it would be a really wonderful potential collaborative effort if you're not already doing that work.
Yes, yes, thank you. We are connected with LA Mission College, who does our Promotora training, and this is our third cohort. We started with Recio Nekompromiso. We are recently connected to CSUN, who is supporting the Farmers Market. Yes.
Thank you.
I see Commissioner Hager.
I really appreciate, I, I'm Dr. Hager and I am a child abuse doctor working in a system, working closely with DCFS. And I think one of the movements in the county right now is to rely on exactly what you're doing out in the valley, the idea of supporting families rather than reporting them. I like to say sustain, which you use that word a lot, which resonated with me rather than detain, because I think we want to know about these families that are maybe not willing to come forward and participate with you necessarily, or their kids are invisible because they're so young, et cetera. So I'm, two things I would like to have you talk about or maybe think about is is using that network to an early identification of high-risk families in the community that may not come forward and seek help. The idea that we would be anticipating them and seeking the resources in the community to help isolated moms, single moms, or kids that are too little to really be visible and and that we would then go in and try to help the family. I think that that is really important, and I think also partnering with the effort, if we're going to accept the idea that we don't report families, which I'm not in favor of that. I'd like to know that they're there so that I can send them to you to be sustained, that I don't see them in my clinic then a year later when they're seriously injured or something else. And we know the statistics show that kids that were not, that they did not get services when they were first identified at risk oftentimes show up being seriously injured. So the idea of using a community resource is something I'm very interested in doing that. And then how is your group identifying them? And the biggest, the biggest request that I've ever had in all the tens of thousands of families that have come through my clinic is exactly what you're doing with Promotoras, the idea of navigators that actually help them find resources that they don't know that's there. They don't want a piece of paper and they don't want a phone number. They want somebody to help them find health or find mental health or find food, you know, those those types of things. So I wanted to really thank you for that and validate that as being the right answer to sustaining families where they are rather than putting kids in a system that we know is, it doesn't work for them, i.e. the foster care system. So thank you for that.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Commissioner McCrasky?
Thank you for all your work. I know that El Nido has deep roots in these communities and approaches problems and issues in that rooted way of coming from the community, et cetera. The enhanced family navigation that you mentioned before is exactly what Dr. Hager was talking about with pilot testing in in your region, because El Nido is known to have skills in that area, which are really wonderful. But also, I'm just wondering, because I'm just thinking right now that because Deborah Davies, who's with El Nido, also chairs or co-chairs the regional council that supports all three of the DCFS offices in the San Fernando Valley. It just feels like there's, there's an, they're unique opportunities in SPA Two to spread the kind of work you're talking about right now and to make sure that Promatoras are at the center of a lot of these efforts. I don't even know what question I'm asking you, but I was just thinking about all of this as you were talking and sort of how the role of El Nido and your work in particular with the Best Start communities is has been at the core of a lot of these developments. So, thank you.
I really appreciate you and Dr. Hager acknowledging, and neither will be a hundred years in 2025. Very well-rounded and rooted in the community. And yes, we work closely, we're embedded in SPA Two. We work closely with Deborah Davies, not only a colleague, a personal friend. I feel like I could call her a personal friend. Thank you.
Commissioner McCrasky? Just wanted to commend El Nido for the incredible work that you do, not just through this program. It's really refreshing to see you also as a partner to First Five. In full disclosure, the city of LA also partners very closely with El Nido, and I was actually there a couple of weeks ago, and I was able to see the First Five program in action. A lot of really wonderful engagement with families and children and different parts and different corners of their of their building. And I think what's really important is that, and just also commend the First Five leadership for identifying anchor organizations like El Nido and the other organizations that are part of this program to really leverage other supports that they can bring to the families that they're working with. And this is really in line with one of the strategic goals or most of our goals, but primarily around ensuring that families have their basic needs met. And so that is part of a more comprehensive strategy. So I just wanted to bring that to light because El Nido, this is one program that leverages other resources that the organization brings to the families that they're working with, which is, I think, really the most powerful way that you can not just transform communities, but obviously transform families, which is really equally important. So just wanted to acknowledge you and thank you for the work that you do.
Thank you.
I also want to thank you for your work and for explaining the different pillars of your comprehensive approach and how it leads to like, you know, systemic change. So thank you for that. My question is, what are, what are the biggest barriers that you face?
You know, that's a big question because there's so many. But I think the partnership with First Five LA was very strategic. The barriers that we normally know that parents, especially women, mothers face is childcare, translation, access to food. The Best Start Grant has been able to provide all that. We have our meetings with childcare provided. We have our meetings. If it's in the evening, we provide the dinner. So again, there's a lot of barriers. There's a lot of challenges, but the the support has been there. It's one of the most generous grants that I have seen that not only speak of the systems that create these barriers, but they address the barriers. Again, providing translation in a meeting, we have, you know, we invite community to a to a meeting and there's no translation available. But we provide the translation. So addressing the barriers that the community has elevated. We just conducted our surveys from October to December 2023, collected seven hundred and fifty-six surveys in order to set our priorities for the next coming years. And what's been elevated, it's immigration, all the different resources that we we know, and we know Pacoima is an immigrant community. I just gave statistics of what population we serve in the community. So there's quite a few barriers. Right now, there's fear because of our political climate. So we have started the voter registration training, and we are really trying to empower community to raise their voice. If the parents are not able to vote for documentation matters, their youth is able to vote. We are targeting the colleges. Somebody mentioned the colleges. We're targeting the colleges. We're targeting different spaces to get the voter registration training and have those tabling efforts in the different spaces.
Thank you. Yes.
Thank you so much. I'm the Director of ICAN, and we have a long history with Carlos Ninos and Del Nino, so it's wonderful to see you here. I want to, first of all, emphasize how important some of the comments that Dr. Hager said about identifying these families before there is a serious need for intervention. And the only way that I believe we can effectively do that is to know what the risk factors are, to acknowledge that it is possible that children can get hurt even when we want to support the family. We have to protect them. One of the things that that ICAN works with is incredibly valuable is the Community Child Abuse Prevention Councils. I don't know if you're both connected to your community child abuse prevention councils, but they they have fingers way into communities, and that's how we kind of learned that in another district, that there's no covers on the bus stops in Antelope Valley. That's not, there's no playground in Antelope Valley or in in San Fernando Valley. The specific issues that these people who are working with multiple programs, not connected to the government, but connected to the private sector, are important to us. But also how important it is for that intersection between the public sector and the private sector takes place. We have a State of Child Abuse in Los Angeles County report, and I don't know if you received that. It's on our website. But it's seventeen agencies with pages and pages of information on what they see in what communities and the kinds of families they interact with and and sometimes how they do and don't work with each other. I mean, that's a whole other issue, you know, the territoriality of the public sector. But your programs have been so good in working with the public sector as well as the community. But I, I'm not sure that we've come far enough anywhere to taking what we've learned from years and years of looking at the absolute devastating outcome of missing an opportunity to help a family. Every day, we hear a story that, oh, my gosh, you know, this was a family isolated in the community. This was a single mother who wasn't connected to any kind of program. This, I mean, all of those issues with food and housing and unemployment and you name it can converge on one little family that doesn't know how or where to seek help. And and I can tell you, if you show me a single mother of four children, under four, isolated and living in a community with a history of domestic violence, I'm going to worry. I want to help her, but I want to really move in with the reality that that these kids could be seriously hurt and have. So, so I guess it's my depressing job all the time to say, hey, things don't always work out so well for these families, but at least know that we did our best. And we, and we carried with us that that understanding of the reality that that people are fragile. Parenting is tough. And and if our support doesn't target what their particular issue is, maybe it's mental illness, it could be a serious health issue. But, but we know, you know, from years of working with these, these families that Dr. Hager sees and that I see that there are risk factors that shouldn't, we should identify them. And I too, I am too supportive of reporting. I'm not supportive of yanking kids out of homes, but I am very supportive of identifying children at risk. And I appreciate the fact that you have worked with the system and that you are connected to the child protection system and encourage you to continue to do so. And I'm happy you're connected to your community child abuse prevention councils. It's very important. So thank you so much for your years of commitment to helping families. Thank you.
Commissioner Ramos?
Just wanted to echo a lot of what has been shared thus far. You've done great work and we really appreciate it. Ms. Byerly, you'll be next, and I'm sure you'll be getting accolades as well. Just wanted to to talk about a couple items. In 2010, I was, as a DCFS rep, I was part of Best Start Wilmington, and I was attending the meetings, brushed up on my Spanish, and it was amazing because you had educational information there regarding nutrition. The parents were able to speak to what they needed. And but what you saw too was the evolution of trust, because when you have multiple agencies there, including the government, and I'm with DCFS Child Welfare, then you don't always get transparent responses because of the fear factor, because of legitimate fear factor when individuals don't knock on a door asking for help, but someone knocks on your door because something hasn't allegedly occurred. And so just wanted to underscore how valuable those meetings have been over the years and also how important it is to to find a way to connect with the community. And you are a part of the community, and clearly you are connecting with the community. I also wanted to mention, Joaquin mentioned the AVRI, and that's up in the Antelope Valley. And so I can speak firsthand about what the AVRI is doing. And it's taken time for the community, once again, to trust the work that's being done on behalf of the community. But what's happening up there, which is amazing, is you have local businesses, local leadership that are leading. Government has stepped aside, in other words, me, and our local leaders are stepping up to say, let's rally and let's work together so we can work on prevention and highlight the needs that are necessary to advance our community. And so I'm just a big cheerleader for everything that's been heard and everything that we need to do. I'm looking at the challenges slide, right? Where it says it's unsustainable model in the current form given our declining revenues. So we definitely need to have a conversation about how to keep that moving. We know there are grants that have been applied for by multiple agencies, and that may be an option as well. But this is real grassroots work that's been done for many years that needs to continue to happen. So I'm really glad that you're all here to present today because we need to do, we need to collective impact, right? We need to work together to ensure that at the end of the day, our children and families have what they need upstream so that if I ever knock, it's simply because I'm lost, you know, social worker. So anyhow, just just wanted to share that, and thank you so much for everything that you do.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Not to sound overly repetitive, but thank you for your fantastic presentation for all the work that you do. There is probably so much that we can learn from how you work with partners in your community, especially since there's a group at the Policy Roundtable who are working on synchronizing our systems within LA County to better serve children and families. And I saw a note on my partner's notes here, as well as I was thinking to myself. And you had mentioned childcare at meetings. Have you worked with others within the ECE community and/or your local LEAs? Or just other kind of bigger entity partners?
We are in conversation with LAUSD, and we're also, we do partner with all the in-home care childcare centers and the preschools. We're picking up back on the work after COVID, but definitely we work, we work with all. The challenge is, there's, somebody, right, asked about the challenges, is that there's a waiting list. One of our biggest partners, the Childcare Resource Center, who supports in so many different avenues, right, for childcare, the waiting list is tremendous. So, so the more resources that are poured into a community in regards to that, that would really be helpful, but for direct childcare.
Great, thank you. Any other comments or questions from commissioners? I don't have anything to add other than my appreciation for you being here today and sharing about the incredible work you do. There are a public, a couple of public comments, but we'll wait for the entire presentation before we go to that. So I'll turn it back over to you.
And turn it over to me. Can I say I'm grateful also Gloria? Thank you. And for all the great comments, because I think it really lends itself to this discussion. So I'm Michelle Byerly. I'm the Executive Director of the Nonprofit Partnership, the RNG in Region Four, which is central Long Beach and Wilmington. And I just want to thank you all, the commissioners, First Five LA Leadership, for inviting us to share and highlight our work with the Best Start Initiative over the past six years, and how community is centered in the work and how that has driven and fostered the conditions for systems change to occur. And I just also want to thank the other regional network grantee and local partners who are also here today. I think everyone's represented behind us or online. And so it really shows that we're doing this work across the region in ways that are meaningful to the communities that we're serving. And so I just want to thank everyone for that support. From the beginning of our work with First Five LA as a regional network grantee, we've truly appreciated our partnership and work with the communities team. And it's been critical to moving systems and resources that drive change, especially as we've been talking about using that as leverage for more work to happen in communities. We've embraced our role as convener, intermediary, and resource provider to co-create those spaces for collective action to occur. And you can move to the next slide. Today, I'll be highlighting examples of how Best Start continues to foster community engagement and meaningful relationships within the networks that we have. As the regional network grantee and an organization dedicated to connecting and convening for greater impact, we're in a position that allows us to understand the landscape of needs, all of which are identified in the nine objectives of the new strategic plan. And by creating a space where objectives are highlighted or those community priorities are highlighted, and both of those are aligned, stakeholders are convening, resources are available, and we're creating conditions for collective action to occur. And because of our unique vantage point, we can catalyze on those actions. This next diagram here, thank you, Joaquin, highlights these spaces in our region where community engagement exists at different levels on the continuum of community engagement. So in some places, full community ownership of the process or the space, and in others, collaboration or consultation. We see each space as a different opportunity to work together for systems change. Collective action occurs in all of these spaces you see here on the diagram because individuals, organizations, and stakeholders, which comprise the network, are able to build relationships and trust, and trust was also mentioned earlier, with one another over time. And now I'll share just a few examples of our work at the local level and takeaways of what's been fostered or co-created in our networks. The State of the Child Report that Joaquin mentioned before that we created in Region Four for each community is an example of how data-driven advocacy can be used within a network to enhance systems change. The report is a compilation of data indicators to highlight the needs, priorities of families with young children in the communities. The report also includes ground truthing and storytelling from residents, and is used to improve systems and advocate for change. Because this advocacy tool is a part of the larger Best Start ecosystem built with stakeholders and residents and nonprofit organizations, and utilized in the collective space we have, it's much more effective for community change than just funding a report as a one-time investment without the structures to support utilization, and without the network to support the advocacy that will then drive systems change. In addition, we saw some of our regional partners, such as the Antelope Valley, create reports for their regions that included storytelling and a tool to advance community priorities. Another layer of how our community of practice space and our cross-county work has been amplified by this Best Start initiative. Moving on to the next example, it highlights community engagement as a central component of strengthening the network. Through the work of participatory budgeting and community-driven grant making, Best Start organizations are really learning what it looks like to have meaningful engagement built into their programs from the beginning of the proposal process. For example, they are learning how to write grant proposals that are focused on community members making the decisions versus funders making decisions. And they're speaking directly to those residents throughout the process. This process as an organization asks for a different level of community engagement than just answering a bullet point on a grant application about your how you're engaging with community. The other critical factor is that it has happened long term in this investment for five years now. Within the Best Start region and practicing that same muscle as an organization throughout the years ensures that this is institutionalized within the community in both organizations, community members, and and really leading community ownership and the resources that are coming in. When it comes to community engagement, the network approach highlights the way that intentional community engagement and leadership helps to expand the network for resources, services, and advocacy. We've seen this happen directly in our communities with the organization Odele, formerly known as Long Beach Immigrant Rights Coalition, and the organization who's been working on immigrant rights and supporting children and families as a part of the community action and advocacy in Long Beach over the years. But because of their participation in the Wilmington Community Partnership and the partnership spaces of Best Start, when given the opportunity for resources to engage further and broaden their own scope, they applied for funding and have now expanded programs into Wilmington. In addition, they've built serving Wilmington into their strategic plan as an organization, and it has been really a mission expansion in the way their services are being provided, due in part to that relationship and the trust that the network has been built within Region Four. The last area of work I want to highlight is how relationships in the network lead to partnerships that can accelerate community change efforts. One example is the newly launched Long Beach Early Learning Hub, or the Hub, as we like to call it, a centralized enrollment and resource center for childcare and more that's in the city of Long Beach. Early into our six-year partnership with First Five and Best Start, along with our program officers, we began to look at other First Five initiatives and investments in the region in order to leverage those investments and partnerships into the network. These investments included supporting the Long Beach Early Childhood Education Strategic Plan and Committee, the business engagement, early childhood policy work, partnership with the Mayor's Fund for Education, Welcome Baby participates in the Best Start space, and more. And now a few years down the road, this collaboration between partners that includes Best Start and is led by the Mayor's Fund and other partners, including the Department of Health, has resulted in a shared enrollment system that launched late last year, which created structural changes in the ways families can access childcare. By building relationships, engaging community, and amplifying priorities in partnerships with in partnership with other organizations and local government and community, the landscape has changed in Long Beach. To close, I just want to highlight that, you know, what we've been talking about, that building trust and relationship with community in a network of organizations and stakeholders is critical for community change. When funding shifts and priorities shifts, we hear a lot about not leaving money on the table or power on the table, but we really want to focus on not leaving our long-term trusting relationships on the table. These relationships are important to sustain any movement that's happening in community, and to be able to focus on changing those systems that are impacting communities. When there's an opportunity, whether that's a funding opportunity or data, a report, or an innovative approach to systems change, and to changing the community, it's critical that there's a container for that to happen, and there's space for that collective action. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Are there questions or comments from commissioners? Commissioner Moses?
Sure, I feel like being a resident of Region Four, it only makes sense to say thank you to you for the presentation that you just provided, as well as the incredible work. One thing that I have consistently seen is not just your work with community, but also your work with community partners and stepping in, for example, during the pandemic, when we were looking for others to to fill these holes, your team quickly said, we're on it, right? And so I just want to say, I really appreciate the work that you're doing, and I appreciate being a partner with you.
Other commissioners? Any? Okay. I appreciate this presentation, and I am interested in learning more about the Long Beach Early Learning Hub. So I already brought up that website because I feel like this is one of those, I'm just, I'd never heard about it before. And seeing that there's even an element of partnering with the Local Chamber of Commerce to strengthen and increase your partners. And I know families have a bigger and bigger challenge knowing how to navigate and access early childcare, especially as they're making decisions for three-year-olds. Do I put them in, you know, public preschool, or do I keep them in early childhood education, which is very different? And knowing how to make that choice and what resources are available to them, I will ask, is, and this may not be a question for you to answer, but just for anyone who can answer, do we take models like this and share it with other regions? After you've assessed what works, what doesn't work, how you would improve it or change it, how do we take these best practices and share with the other regional networks?
I'll start. And I I just also want to clarify, we are a partner in this work. The Mayor's Fund for Education is actually an item coming up later on the agenda, is funded through First Five. Some Best Start funds are also directed to that project, and we're there as a partner. There have been many requests already, my understanding as being a part of the task force, for the model to be shared in different places throughout the county and elsewhere throughout the state and other places. So that is part of the process too, and it's still ongoing. And I'll just say, because of some of the work, you know, we have this structure in place to be an intermediary because of the work we're doing as the Best Start Regional Grantee. So in the pandemic and what Commissioner Alejandra was working, was speaking of, was really that we had built these relationships with providers because we were a conduit for their emergency funds that they were receiving for all the home care providers in partnership with the Health Department to get funding to them. So now we have relationships with these organizations and nonprofits providing childcare. And so when we're a part of the ECE Committee and the Hub is being built, then we have these already, you know, relationships in place that we can expand and start moving quickly instead of wanting to put a hub in place and then trying to go out and build the relationships. And it also speaks to First Five's long-term investment in the ECE Committee that I think celebrated 25 years last year in the community. So so yes, we're sharing it out and and we're happy to be a part of that as as a way to leverage what we're doing investor.
And but what I hear you saying is that it may not be a program that's easy to replicate if those relationships are not already part of the foundation of other regions or communities?
It helps when there's a ecosystem in place that can support it. So like, there has been now built in five different regions in LA County because of Best Start.
Okay, thank you so much.
And I'll just add, I think the learning that's happening internally, this is a really good example of this year, and we'll hear about it later as an info item, a collaboration with Best Start, our communities team and our ECE team, as a result of some of the the learning that we've been doing internally, and sharing information and opportunities to to leverage resources and coordinate work. And then we also have a community of practice space that brings together the five regions periodically to to share best practices, but also to learn from each other. And and there, Michelle's a big part of that space in terms of talking about sustainability now on a on a collective level, which is really exciting. So more to come on that.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner McCroskey.
Back to a comment that Alejandra made a minute ago, I just wanted to say that the Policy Roundtable for Childcare, oh, thank you.
It should, I should turn it on, that the Policy Roundtable for Childcare and Development is very interested now in trying to understand the multiple ways in which the ECE system is working with other systems in local communities. The I didn't know about the Hub either until a couple of weeks ago, but it's one of the things that's on our list of trying to understand, you know, sort of what might be replicable, what what lessons you've learned, et cetera. So I just wanted to raise that. We'd be really interested in learning more about where you'd like to see things heading and and how it could fit in regions around the county potentially, or be adapted in regions around the county.
And I'll just, the only thing I'll, I there's, that's to be continued, I think, but I just want to say that we can use the data and something like the report or the priorities or information we're gathering in the Best Start space to then understand what resources do we need to build into our hub? What what stipends or scholarships or funding do we need to build in to meet the needs that we see in the community? So it's one of those ways we can use that space.
I I really wanted to thank you very much for both of you for the presentation. And I cannot emphasize enough how important it is that the communities drive the resources and collaboration in protecting and identifying the individuals within the community that need help, whether they are families seeking for their own children, or for a huge percentage of what I do, foster kids that don't have a voice, that are also living in that in that community, by identifying them and trying to figure out how how to help them. I I I think it is has to be a public-private partnership, but I'd be very candid with you, although this, I think, appears to be part of the public, more or less, I think. But it's really the private part of the community that drives change, that really insists on change. And and, you know, for those of us, like some of my longstanding friends here, and I can remember Frank Ramos, when he was a line worker, bringing kids into my clinic, right, Frank? And the idea being that that we were partners, although I was private, and he was public, the partnership was focused on the well-being of the child. And unless we get back to that place where we're where the private sector, where you are, is saying, you've got to do more, and there's got to be better mental health, there's has to be better health and access to help. When we look at poverty kids in this county, and 60% of them are not getting healthcare, or not accessing healthcare when they're little, and that's a clear statistics, then then we need to figure out how to be better advocates for them. And you, I can sit here in my office and and scream and tear my hair out, but it's you that have to drive that 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 decision. And it's it frustrates me, because I know what's possible. And and in my opening a clinic for that was partnership with DCFS, that was open 24 hours a day, we were able to keep a huge percentage of the kids out of foster care. And asking families, how do we help you? And that that was something I didn't expect when I started a clinic in East Delhi, that it was going to be focused on keeping kids out of foster care, because they were going there because their parents were poor, and they didn't speak English, and they didn't understand, and they didn't have running water in their garage. You know, that was, that was a private-public partnership about keeping kids safe. But it was driven by that, that, that unity. You know, and while we're sitting here talking about the pandemic, I wanted to thank Barbara for keeping us all alive. For five years. I wanted to acknowledge it because every time I see you, I think I should thank you. But I'm just saying is, is, I would love to talk to you afterwards, but I have some, especially some ideas of things that we should be doing. And I, but I can't do it. But you can do it.
And I'll just mention, you know, I talked about community-driven grant making and also participatory budgeting. So in, let's just, Long Beach, I have Long Beach in front of me, and also Wilmington, but we talk about these grants, like Odele had a grant through this program. We're funding home visitation collaboratives, we're funding the child abuse collaborative, and asking them to provide their, what they're doing is providing some level of advocacy system change work. Sometimes that goes along with providing some basic needs, but they're also adding that layer. And so we are, I can't do it alone either. And so through those grants that are driven by community and a voting process, and and also community building projects together, which is how participatory budgeting works, is is really giving them then as organizations, instead of having one Best Start entity doing the work. Now we have 18 organizations that are combined with residents to drive that forward in the community. So I think the model is there for it. And the more resources that are given into a system like that, then the more that they can do also. So I agree.
I'm really hoping that our culture that we live in, whether it's local or national, that the child becomes important yet again. I really think that we've kind of missed that to some degree. And I really, it makes me sad. And I, you know, so I want to thank you both for everything you're doing. But I mean, to me, breaks my heart. I shed tears over it. The idea that children have lost their importance in many regions of our society, and I'd like to see them become important again.
Thank you, Commissioner. Are there any other comments or questions from commissioners? Okay, we have three public comments in person. I'll start with Susanna Medina.
John, do we, do we have a few questions for the?
Yeah, if if we could just, there's one more slide.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. Can you undo that?
Good afternoon, everyone. Commissioner, thank you. Earlier today, a colleague mentioned the impact of the numbers. Well, my humble message of thanks is from the communities of Best Start Wilmington. Please suggest that your most gracious funding is positively addressed to intergenerational health and social outcomes today right now. Specifically, for example, you're.
Let's see, families, families find their voices in this big world, experiencing systems change and subsequently becoming stronger parents who are raising healthier, happier children. I don't want to take up too much of the time, even though I have a little bit left, but I'm going to start how I finished. Thank you. We thank you for your continued funding. It's imperative to moving the needle of change and community engagement with Best Start Wilmington. So thank you very much on behalf of Best Start Wilmington. Thank you.
Thank you, and I apologize, I did jump ahead. So thank you for your comment. I'm going to hold off on the other two public comments and turn it back over to John. Please forgive me.
Thank you. I'll see if we can get the slide back up. Thank you. So at this point in the presentation, we wanted to really, again, express appreciation for our colleagues. So thank you, Joaquin and Gloria, Michelle. And we wanted to bring a topic of conversation back to the board as we think about the, our new strategic plan. And as we think about what community engagement should look like in the new strategic plan, we've highlighted a couple sets of questions here for the board's consideration to inform our own internal thinking as staff digs into this. So the first set of questions really are building off of the presentation of our two RNGs. So given the examples that they've shared, what you know more broadly across all of the five RNGs and the work they've done in community, what lessons should we staff be taking into account as we think about what our community engagement work should look like going forward? And then also the roles for First Five LA as spelled out in our new strategic plan really call out the role of connector, convener, thought partner and advocate. So given the experience of the last that has been shared, do any of these kind of resonate more with the board than others, others? Some of these roles we should be leaning into more. Then the second sets of questions have to do around more how we apply our community engagement thinking and work to our systems change. And how does that connection occur? Are there examples or elements that have resonated with any of the board around how to use community engagement as a strategy for affecting systems change with our county system partners, who are also incredibly important partners and governance, governance role with First Five LA. So those are the two sets of questions and I'll turn it back over to you, Madam Chair, for the board discussion on these items.
Commissioner Cortez.
Yes, thank you again for your, for your presentation, for these questions, which were really helpful because I was trying to figure out how to, to connect the dots. So as you were speaking and questioning, I was just, I was really thinking about this, again, this higher education pipeline that's a possibility. I know that you're already connected to Mission and CSUN, but I was also thinking about UCLA that does a, I believe, a Fiat Lux program and they have students that do sort of thesis projects that might really, that are specific to community engagement of unhoused populations or food insecurity, to name a few. And so that might be a really good place to, for a student to do some of this work or a group of students. And then to find some sort of, another space for you all to, to have that work highlighted, but also to really engage with younger, you know, for stu, for students with, engage with students who are very interested in this advocacy piece and were working with, with children and families, maybe not necessarily in a classroom setting, but in a, you know, in a kind of boots-on-the-ground setting and who really need that kind of a, don't really know where to go for that engagement. I think that's one space. I do think that there's a huge push right now with the loss. I also represent Pierce College, right? So with the Chancellor's Office potentially, and there's a lot of workforce development initiatives. And I think that there's a really good space to kind of reach out to the Chancellor's Office at Los Angeles Community College District potentially. To kind of really, so again, same, the same idea, but with a different population of students. And, and many of the students who may, who live right in those communities, who might really want to give back to their own, to the communities they were raised in. And potentially to expand also into other spaces, Canoga Park, Reseda, et cetera. So those are just my kind of initial thoughts. But again, this is such a great space and I'm really excited to see where, where this goes next. So, and thank you again.
Yeah, thanks, thanks, John, for the, for the questions and the opportunity to comment. You know, I, I love the idea of the regional networks. I hope we continue to support them. I, I think they're vital to the work and, and I think we've just heard why. So I don't, you know, I, I don't need to like sort of repeat the, the opportunities and the success. I think I'll say this, like, you can't float in and out of community engagement strategies. So, you know, like, they really need sustained investments for core work. And, and one of the things that really hurts, I think, us as an organization, but also the work that's happening in our communities is sort of the short timeframes. I mean, we think in relatively short timeframes, you know, three years, maybe five years seems like forever, but it's really not at the community level for building relationships, trust, et cetera. So, so I personally am hoping there will be a continued investment. Because I, I think there's, there's huge promise here and there's been huge success. I do, I do have, you know, we have some lessons learned because we do some similar regional work around violence prevention. And we also fund regional organizations to sort of bring people together in coalition, you know, in a coalition-type framework to come up with a community plan, you know, for that region on preventing violence. And, and it's, it's, it's very organic to the communities. And we've had lots of different things that have, you know, different organizations have been working on. But it's been hard to sort of capture an overall impact on some of the bigger policies or practices or systems that everybody agrees there, there would be an opportunity for there to be some change. One thing I'm, I'm wondering if I, I'm not crazy about us directing the regional networks to come up with common agendas that go across the regions. But I wonder if the regional networks had the opportunity to work with each other, if they could identify one or two issues that they do want to work on county-wide, where they would benefit from the wisdom and the strength in having multiple communities working on them. And they could lift that up for us to then, you know, figure out how we best support that work. Because I, I do think there's something about, we're a big county and I think there's, there's some power behind being a big county when you're trying to make some big changes or even little changes. But you know, like, like, for example, for us, you know, we, we ask everyone, you know, after, after talking to everyone, to adopt the Gun Violence Prevention Platform. Like, we wanted all of the regional groups to be working on gun violence prevention because it's such a big issue and it cropped up everywhere and we wanted everybody to help each other on that. So, you know, I think of it the same way, but I, I personally think this is really, really important work. And I, I hope we're able to continue to sustain it.
I actually really agree with that, but I also think that we have commissioners that sit that from each region, you know, from every report up to the, allegedly up to the Board of Supervisors. And I think that one of the, we were talking about a role, how the role changes as income changes, people stop smoking, which is a good thing, actually. Yeah, and within, within reason, within reason, yeah. As speaking as a physician, it's, it's a good thing. I, I would love to see First Five be a real positive voice to getting over the speed bumps that are unique to maybe the community that you're in, but also, as Barbara said, into, into more globally, the, the, maybe global speed bumps that need to be taken on, that, that would happen. And I think another role that First Five could have, could be we as commissioners who want to be more involved in what's going on in the community that we represent, to listen to and participate and be part of what, you know, what's going on and where the, where those, that could be helped. Because I think we are, we can be a powerful voice for change and supporting things and supporting you. And I think that's, rather than being two separate entities, and it's great, and I'm glad you're here, thank you very much. And then go do it. I really think that doing the hard work would be something that, that, that First Five could do. And I'm just speaking for Asher Tager right now and not for this board, but I'm, I think that, that I would certainly love the opportunity to see a community be activated and, and, and us all be a voice for that positive change that so many of us really would like to see. So I, I mean, I am going to talk about San Fernando Valley a little bit with you later because I have work there.
Commissioner Bird.
So in terms of some of the questions that you're posing, I'm thinking of the examples. You know, I think that several of our departments here do a lot around community engagement. And there's basic things we've learned, right? It's better when it's, when community is engaged by familiar people, people that they know, people that live within that community. So partnerships around some of that. I think community engagement's more successful when it's held at a convenient time and place for the community. Right? So it may not be between the hours of nine to five. It may not be Monday through Friday. So it really is looking at when the community is available to be engaged with. I think food, you mentioned food, feeding people. I think that's always a draw, especially when you're dealing with people who have a lot of unmet needs. And I think engaging with partners who have resources to share, whether it's tangible diapers, baby food, whatever, or other resources that can, that one might be able to get connected to. So I think that there's very specific things we've learned. But I think that for me, those are some of the big things that you spoke of that I think we need to be keeping in mind. And then bringing in people here who have some expertise or county partners that could be involved in some of that engagement because some of the county departments bring with them other resources.
Other commissioners?
Yes. I want to say something positive for change. Good things are happening, by the way, and there are far less children who are severely or fatally hurt now than five, 10, 20 years ago. And most of that, I think, is related to the intervention with isolation. Of all the risk factors that contribute to the abuse or neglect or, or death of a child, it's isolation and bringing the community together and helping families, especially families with very young children, to, to feel not alone is so important. Also, I want to comment on safe sleep. The First Five Commission has supported, along with ICANN, a very assiduous campaign to, to prevent this most preventable tragedy of, of any tragedy for children in that is suffocation from co-sleeping and not sleeping in an uncluttered crib. So on the county side, there's now a huge effort to provide every newborn, every family with a newborn in a county hospital with a crib. If they don't have one, just like they need to have a car seat, they will, will have a crib. And I think that, to me, is something that can have a huge impact, but it doesn't affect every hospital, just the county hospitals, but it's a huge start. And to the extent that the community can identify that as a need. Thank you, First Five, for, I'm proud to be part of this effort to produce these brochures and to, in, a few years ago, a very large campaign that cut the number of unsafe, safe sleep deaths in half. So the other one, of course, is safe surrender. Say, the alternative to leaving a newborn baby when you're, you know, either a mother of 10 or a teenager. The alternative to leaving that infant in a, in a trash bin, to taking that child in anonymously and having it adopted by loving families. And that's information, that's just information out there for the community. And of course, the third campaign would be the no-hit. It just isn't helpful to hit your child, especially very young children. And yet it's part of a culture that, that has been established over time. But research shows it doesn't help discipline the child. Child doesn't behave better as a result of being hit just as afraid and will grow up to believe hitting is the way to handle anger. And then we see that cycle. So you, you are in places to project these incredible resources and findings based on the, the bad outcomes that can lead to positive outcomes. So thank you for that.
Commissioner Madas.
Thank you. I wanted to circle back to Commissioner Castro's point about career development initiatives. So should you need a resource for career development initiatives? I'm at Lago, we have developed a pathway for our parents and head start to become assistant teachers and pathways for them to be teachers. It's very exciting. So if you need any support with that or any information, should you find it to be a need in your community, happy to help.
Commissioner McCroskey.
Just initial thought about what are the strongest opportunities to apply the community engagement to county systems change? Not only from the, the Best Start work, but from other work that's been going on in the county over the last 15, 10 to 15 years as well. There's been, we've learned a lot. You were, you were just mentioning it, Dr. Bird, from county-based efforts, but also from other philanthropic-based efforts to really engage communities in the way you were talking about over the long term and, and what opportunities that brings to the fore. One of the things I'm finding really exciting is participatory budgeting. Michelle mentioned it. We're seeing that in a lot of places now where, where you have, when you have the relationships, when you have the, the, the common perception of what are key issues in our community. And you ask people, what's most important to you to work on? You know, not a list of 15 things, but one or two things that are most important to you to work on. That the outcomes of even a small investment there are really very impressive. And I feel like that, that's just one. But I feel like First Five is in a good position to draw from the, the Best Start work, but as I say, also from other work that's kind of allied with this. And, and to help sort of start a, a broader conversation about what are we learning? What are we learning through, obviously, the poverty alleviation efforts, right? The, the basic income efforts, but also this, I don't even know, quite know what to call it, but funding community residents to address the things that they think are most important in their communities. And then sharing the results of those in, in a broader way. It feels like First Five could help to sort of distill, distill some of those lessons and sort of help not only us, but, but others of our partners understand kind of what are the next steps? And, and you know, where, where should we be setting our sights as we look forward?
Any other comments? Yes, of course.
I forgot to mention home visitation in terms of the positive outcomes that if isolation's the number one risk, home visitation is the number one connection and prevention. in terms of the positive outcomes that if isolation is the number one risk, home visitation is the number one connection and prevention mechanism. So add that to your, to the list. And also message to us to try to keep that going and, and reach as many families as possible, especially high-risk families.
Thank you. I just, I don't have much to add other than to the question, what roles stand out connector, convener, thought partner, advocate? It's hard to choose from those four because I think they're all equally important. But just based on these conversations, I think connector and thought partner are critical when it comes to community-based work. Because sometimes the data that's gathered, it gets to the higher level later than the changes are impacting the communities themselves. And so I think being rooted in the community, you're hearing the needs change in real time and you're able to respond to that by taking those needs and, and bringing it to the forefront and saying this is what's going to have the greatest impact right now, instead of waiting for the data to show proof that that's what was needed. So just being that thought partner and allowing communities to really drive the change. And I agree with Commissioner Hager that it's a public private partnership that's needed, but those partnerships have to be truly driven by the people, by people power. And so you are allowing this to happen. And just, I was able to attend a Best Start Region Two community event where they are, you talked about translation services being a critical need that you're able to provide. And for a long time, in my own limited thinking, when I hear translation services, I often think about English being the way that the meeting is led and those who are non-native English speakers are translated to in, in whatever language is their home language. But at the Best Start Region Two convening, there was translation services provided for everyone. So the community members were able to speak in whatever language was most comfortable to them, which changes the entire dynamic of the space because it really empowers people to have that sense of agency and to know that we're not accommodating you, we're centering you. And there's a big difference in the work that we do when it's intentional. So thank you for this presentation. And if we're okay now, may I call up the public comments? We're good? Okay. We have two remaining public comments in person. First, we'll hear from Carlos Arceo and followed by Andy Yam. You both have two minutes each.
Commissioners, thank you for your time. I have to admit that I had talking points and then this conversation kind of obliterated those. So I'm going to see if I could stay focused. But my name is Carlos Arceo. I'm the Associate Director of Community Transformation for Para los Niños, one of the RNGs, specifically for Region One that works with Southeast LA, South El Monte del Monte, East LA and Metro LA. And I just wanted to appreciate our partners in the communities team and also for our colleagues who have presented about our work, our collective work. And I also just really want to appreciate the, a lot of the love that I'm hearing in terms of the commitment to this work and working in partnership. And I really appreciate commissioners' comments on how is it that we center community members themselves. So I wanted to share a couple of successes that I feel kind of speak to that and are in alignment with these changes in the strategic plan. So over the past couple of months, we've met with over 300 community members of all four partnerships to develop a strategic plan that will be informing our work for the next five years. It is coming directly from them, as some of you have mentioned. One of the things that they want to focus on besides housing and also housing and health and mental health is the creation of economic opportunity and jobs. So we currently have a partnership with Children's Hospital Los Angeles where community promoters have changed the reception of services and resources from 25% to 86% over the course of one year. Additionally, after an initial meeting with Council District One last year, the council member requested a meeting recently with over 200 Region One residents to hear about their needs and their recommendations for the use of the budget across the, the city as well. And then finally, you know, focusing on the values-based leadership development learned through Best Start Region One. Most recently, the relationships have been leveraged where community members are joining housing coalitions to advocate in Sacramento for policy change as well. So I share those with you as examples of how in partnering with community members, this also can look beyond that. So yeah, we're really excited about the alignment with, with the strategic plan. And while I honor the, the work of our colleagues to fulfill these roles, I'm particularly excited to share that community members have been filling those roles for years as well. So thank you.
Thank you. Andy Yam?
Thank you so much, Vice Chair McBride and Commissioners for the time. My name is Andy, External Affairs and Public Policy Manager at Rising Communities, one of the five regional network grantees of the Best Start Program. I'll just kind of speak through this. I did have talking points, but you know, the, the amazing feedback from the commissioners pretty much wiped out everything I was going to say. And so, you know, I'd just first like to recognize our partnership with the First Five LA Communities Team, who are our links, right, to, to you all. And I'd also like to express, express my appreciation and our organization's appreciation to Vice Chair McBride, who joined us in community, by the way, coming, driving out to our site to join in at the Community Engagement and Community Organizing Summit, directly talking with residents. So thank you so much. And so while we weren't able to speak and answer questions as part of the agenda item, I'd just like to share a few things as well that I think are very important to the conversation, is that our organization has really centered community voices in our work. And some of our victories is we convened a candidate forum through Best Start where 120 individuals attended this, this candidate forum. All eight, all eight candidates for Senate District 35 were in attendance, answered questions from the community, and that is what drives real policy and systems change, right? Really elevating and bringing education directly to the voters and holding folks accountable within the district itself, as well as also the creation of our Mother's Rising Guaranteed Income Program, which you, I know you've heard of, but you know, I verified a mother, her enrollment, and she had said that she prayed to God for an opportunity like this, and he delivered. And that is what Best Start brings to the community. It's real people in these communities that are being uplifted by this work. And so, and, and just one quick thing also to address Dr. First's point, you know, while, you know, the RNGs have not had the opportunity to work together in the Best Start space, Region One and Region Two actually actively cooperate in different coalitions and also are part of the Steering Committee for Housing Collaboratives, Housing and Health Collaboratives, centering, again, resident voices, as was mentioned by Carlos. And so as you can see, you know, we're, we're definitely much rooted in the community and we hope that folks are able to join us in community. And last but not least, with a 13% reduction this upcoming budget, as well as the future of the programming hanging in the balance, I ask if First Five and the Commissioners are willing to walk away from your investment into the community. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Ms. Voe, are there any public comments for people not in the room?
Confirming there are no other public comments on this item.
Okay, thank you so much. I think that's the end of this item. I really appreciate your presentation and your time. Thank you. The next item is a written-only item for information on the amendment of the strategic partnership with Catalyst California in the amount of $200,000 for a total of $1,350,000 through June 30th, 2025, to support First Five LA's work towards the 2024-2029 strategic plan goals by providing data at the regional and countywide levels. There will be no presentation on this. Do Commissioners have any comments? And this is just information, so there's no action on this, correct?
That is correct.
Ms. Voe, are there any public comments on this item?
There are no public comments on this item.
Seeing none, moving on to the next item. The next item is a written-only item for information on the amendment of the strategic partnership with community partners who are a fiscal sponsor for the Mayor's Fund for Long Beach, formerly Long Beach Mayor's Fund for Education in the amount of $100,000 for a total of $400,000 through June, $400,000 through June. There will be no presentation on this. Are there any public comments, any comments from Commissioners? And we do have one public comment in person from Carissa Sylvester. You have two minutes.
Thank you. Good afternoon, First Five LA Commissioners. I will keep this brief. I'm your Early Learning Hub person, so I look forward to coming back and giving you a more detailed presentation on that. As outlined in your own strategic plan, which is awesome, by the way, there's a lot of alignment between your work and that of the Mayor's Fund for, for Long Beach. On the surface, sometimes our work has been slow-going. We've had our roller coaster moments. But if I look back at where we started to where we're going now, it's really astonishing between millions of dollars in city investment, working with our local Chamber of Commerce for them to engage in early education. Which was no small feat, was amazing, and, and engage in new community partners. We fought to have early education and the needs of children and family at decision-making tables. And now we have a seat in some really impactful ways. Your continued investment will support our ability to keep early childhood at those tables. It's one thing to be invited there once or even twice. It's another thing. It takes tenacity and intentional strategy to stay at those tables, to keep early education and the needs of children and families at the forefront of this interest. Someone mentioned previously, you're hoping to have young children or families come back into the spotlight of this core of our needs. We're here to help you do that and elevate that with our local community partners, like Michelle mentioned, and our other local partners within the community of, like, Long Beach. There's a lot of different competing interests out there. Some people, you know, like to talk, you know, they're starting to group early education and young children into youth. I liken that into grouping seniors with the term adults. They are unique. They have their own nuances and needs, and we need to continue to elevate these nuances and work with partners to specifically address those unique needs and unique nuances. We think our Early Learning Hub does that. I will not get into that here. I do have enough time, but I look forward to coming back in the future. Thank you, Alyssa, and the First Five LA team, and Marcy. They've been wonderful collaborators and I'm excited for the press conference. We also want to keep the momentum going. Thank you so much.
Ms. Voe, are there any other public comments?
Confirming there are no other public comments on this item.
Okay, moving on to the next item, public comments for items not on the agenda. Do we have any public comments for items not on the agenda?
Confirming there are no public comments for items that are not on the agenda.
Seeing none, we will adjourn this meeting. The next Board of Commissioners meeting will be on June 13th. Thank you.